Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
He waved and...
I'm here.
All right, Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and again, welcome to the program. We have this evening a few special guests. As we all know, we're going into our almost nine month of experiencing this COVID-19 virus. And thanks to some of our, to all of our guests this evening here at our meeting, we just want to thank them. They have walked the extra mile through this pandemic to help our community power through. So tonight, we want to celebrate them, all their contributions to our community, and look forward to, you know, next year. So with that, I'd like to start first with recognizing our West Orange Farmers Market volunteers. Stacy, we, tonight, we have Stacy Reese and Rob Reese and their son Finn. Hi Finn, how are you?
Good night.
And thank you for being here this evening. You know, the West Orange Farmers Market, you were in your second year this year. You had a great opening year last year. Just the community, just, you had such a great vibe going last, last year. And everyone was looking so forward to it. And when the pandemic hit, we just appreciate so much you and Rob and your volunteers just being creative and how you could serve the community. So I just wanted to, you know, show a few pictures first before we bring you on. And there we have, in the top left picture, we have Adam McCauley, his dad Sean, there's Stacy and Stacey Gravewala. And they were staples, and Rob, Robin didn't get in the picture. We asked you to get in the picture, you hid from us that day. But, you know, you were just staples every week, you know, starting last May going through. And we see Sean there with, you know, putting stuff in people's cars. I know Councilman Guarino was out there every week for many weeks. And so if you want to, just to say a few words and let us know how things went through the pandemic, and I know you opened up, as you could see in the background, you were able to have a walkable market once the summer commenced, which was great. I know many people appreciate it. And maybe you could let us know the kind of numbers that you had there and what you're looking forward to this coming spring. So Stacy and Rob Reese.
Yeah, well, thanks for the beautiful introduction. You can see that we have a fantastic family of volunteers with us that were really with us all summer long. It's fantastic. I love these people like they're my own family. I mean, we see them every Saturday. But the market itself was, it was, I mean, we did what we could. We started out, the season even before the pandemic was, you know, a huge concern in this country. We started with a huge line of events. Everything was scheduled. I had chili cook-offs scheduled, which was a huge thing last year. Kids' Day, Carnival Day, National Farmers Market Week. I mean, we had the whole season planned out and like the flick of a switch, we had to just drop everything and figure out what the next plan of attack was and as if was there even going to be a farmers market? We just weren't sure. And like a lot of people everywhere, we're just not sure what was going to be coming. We'd never lived through something like that before, so what do you do? But we ultimately decided that it was getting really tough to get food at ShopRite, at Whole Foods, Mr. Cart was like usually unavailable. And we didn't want anybody to go hungry. And when we started the farmers market last season, we made it our mission to make sure to get quality food in the hands of as many people as possible. And we decided that this season, we're going to do the same thing. It's just going to be a little bit different. So like I mentioned, at the drop of, the drop of a hat, right? We thankfully, you know, Rob came into the picture and he had this great idea to make online ordering available, which was fantastic. And you can see the pictures there. We did a drive-through the first, what was it, eight weeks of the market. People would online order before Thursday at midnight, get everything they need from the vendors. And come Saturday morning, everybody would be in line. We'd had basically appointments, you would come at certain times depending on your, your last name. So wouldn't get, you know, packed with 200 cars right away. And it was fantastic. And then once we realized that we could safely have it as a normal farmers market with some extra precautions, like hand sanitizer all around, everybody's wearing masks, some of the vendors had roped off their tables. So there was surely a little bit of a different aspect of the market. But I think people really enjoyed it. And towards the end of the season, people were more comfortable. They already had the idea of social distancing. So even though all of our volunteers were well-trained in how to tell somebody politely to please socially distance or please wear your mask, we even had masks for those that didn't have one. But it really wasn't a problem at all. Everyone came prepared, knew what to do, wore their masks, socially distanced all by themselves. And that's what made it a real success for this year. So we thank everybody that came out to the farmers market, were supportive, or even just shared one of our links or supported one of our vendors in any way. It's really extraordinary. And, you know, hopefully next year, it's not as crazy, but, and we can get back to our events. But even if not, I mean, our mission still stands the same, we want to get quality food into as many people's hands as possible. We want to support our local community in every single way. And that mission will never change.
And Stacy, Chris, the holidays are right around the corner. Is there your website that your vendors are on if anyone would like to order anything throughout the holidays?
Sure, so our, our website is not offline, but you can't order through it. But you can go to any one of the vendors. All the vendors have their own websites. And if they don't have a storefront, they, they have a website that you can order through. So like Jenna's Jammy, which is our jam lady, she's got a website you can order through. I mean, our farmers even have hot house tomatoes available all season. I mean, it's, it's really great. We have a really strong family of vendors that we totally love and appreciate. And you can support them. If anybody has a specific request to see a vendor's website or anything, please just let me know. You can email info@wofarmersmarket.com and just say, hey, where did we get the bread from? Because I'd really love to order some bread. And either Rob or myself would be happy to reach out and let you know how to grab that.
Well, we, we want to thank you both for all of your efforts. I mean, you thought of everything to make the community safe. You had hand sanitizers throughout the, throughout the lot. You know, anything you could, could do, you, you were thinking of it. And I think it was just such a great opportunity. Folks were just very, very excited just to come on down, you know, walk around safely and just have some sense of normalcy for a little bit of the day. So thank you both so much and all your volunteers for walking the extra mile this past year. And we look forward to a very successful spring for, for the West Orange Farmers Market. Thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
So next, we would like to recognize Pleasant Valley Productions. And representing them this evening is Camille DiLorenzo. Let's see, Camille?
Okay, I'm going to mute it. Hi.
Sorry. We can't have you muted.
I think I was muted.
So hi, Camille, thank you for coming this evening. And we appreciate this summer, going into the summer and looking for pure quality entertainment safely. You and your group of volunteers were readily available, thinking of every which way, how to keep the community safe up at OSPAC. And you did a tremendous job. I know at first, it was very stressful wondering how you could have a large crowd safely. And you just did a beautiful job spacing out the community and providing top-quality entertainment with four, I believe you have four cover bands. You had a food truck there, you had the beer and wine garden. Just enjoy and beautiful evenings. You really got lucky with the weather as well. So we're going to show a few pictures on the screen. And if you'd like to name your volunteers, your key volunteers that helped you put this together. Of course, that picture was from last year post-pandemic.
Right, so, so the picture on the left is from our Fall Festival last October, pre-COVID.
Oh, pre-COVID, sorry.
Pre-COVID. And yes, so those are all of our trustee volunteers. Mike, who's our technical director, myself, Harrison, Robyn, Elizabeth Rogers, Beth, Andrea, Laura, Laura, who is our executive director, Tracy, who does our marketing, and our three interns. Oh my goodness, so the twins are Kathleen and Mary. And Michelle is in the middle. Okay, wow, that was great. Oh, and this picture here with masks, that's the famous Guarinos. And Beth and Michelle again. Michelle is one of our interns. We've got a program that we call the Protege Program. And it is to foster interest in young people, not only as performers, but as backstage theater workers. So we do, well, we're going to hopefully do a lot more of it once we're all back to normal. We're doing internships in stage management and producing and directing and technical theater like sound and lights. We had hoped that we would do a lot of it this past summer, but most of that got canceled. We had a season planned, it was a really great season. We had a, a youth musical that was for teenagers only planned. And I won't, I won't go through all of the things we had planned because most of it got canceled. But we did what everyone did this year, we did a pivot. We pivoted and we broke through that challenge and decided we've got to bring some kind of normalcy to the community. They've got to be able to watch some live music. So we went out there with tape measure and decided how many people could fit safely. We didn't do pods, but we did markers and it was safe. And we put banners and signage all over the place. And people really adhered to all of the guidelines. We had protocol listed all over the building, all over outside. And we did manage to get five or six really good concert events where the community came out and enjoyed a Johnny Cash cover band, The Weaklings, which was an amazing Beatles band. We had a Pleasant Valley Productions produced a full Motown night. That was, in, in terms of the numbers, the, the most well-attended of the whole summer. We did a cabaret, like a Broadway-style cabaret. We had a comedy night that was sponsored by the Recreation Department. And we also had a huge calling this summer, as you can imagine, for other groups looking to use OSPAC. All of the groups that would normally do indoor theater or have their high school productions or their dance recitals were all canceled. So, you know, in an effort to keep that going, they all reached out to us. Obviously, we couldn't accommodate all of them, but we were able to get something booked with the high school. And we plan to continue working in partnership with West Orange High School Performing Arts Department so that their kids do get to perform live this spring and summer. They weren't, we weren't able to do it in the fall because I think they went hybrid. In any case, it was surprisingly a wonderful season. And people were so happy to come out for just a few hours because they felt normal for a little while. And we couldn't have done it without all of the volunteers and certainly without the support of the township. Can you check, oh, yes. So we're always looking for volunteers, so I put up this little contact at. If you want to reach out to us or, or go to our website, pleasantvalleyproductions.org, and click on the link where you can volunteer, or just send us an email and let us know what you would like to do. We anticipate this summer, if things are the way they were last summer, we are going to bring live entertainment to West Orange again. And thank you for recognizing us tonight.
Thank you, Camille. Again, just exceptional, just with the creativity and just thinking of ways to keep our community safe. So I'm going to have all my colleagues respond at the end, but I just, just want to thank you for, for coming tonight and all your volunteers for all their hard work. And I know, I know, just, you know, speaking to people as they, they left OSPAC on each and every of those evenings, you just brought such joy to our community. So thank you so much for walking the extra mile.
Thank you.
And your volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing also, we are very fortunate in town to have our West Orange SERC team. They, a group of volunteer individuals that come out, emergency response team, when there's emergent need in the community. And what more than a better need than we had this past year, especially in when the pandemic first hit in March and April, with getting food out to our community. Mainly our seniors, our folks who were ill with COVID or just had underlying conditions and were, you know, were scared to, to go out to, to the store for food. So we were fortunate enough to have our SERC team, an outstanding group of individuals, come out and serve the community. We have Ken Steele with us this evening, representing the SERC team. So we'll get Ken on and we'll have our picture of our volunteers up. Lauren? Beautiful. So before I let Ken speak, hi Ken, how you doing?
Very well, and yourself?
Great, thank you. I have the list here of your team during this pandemic. And let me know if I miss anybody, going from left to right. Ezreal Gross, Matt Dragon, Joe McCartney, Sue McCartney, Lucie Anne Waldowski. We had our Laura Van Dyke, Calagra McCormick, Adoria Sein, you yourself, Ken, Noelia Perez, Steve Wine, Massimo McCormick, and Kathy Franco. So we had all of them in attendance. I'm not sure if I, hope I didn't miss anybody?
No, we got it covered very well, thank you.
Beautiful. So if you could talk a little bit about the service you had provided our community earlier in the pandemic and share, share with us all of your efforts this past year.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank you as the council president for giving us an opportunity to be recognized by the town. I would also definitely like to thank Councilwoman Sue McCartney and her husband, Joe, because whenever we needed them, and that was all the time, they were there delivering for us, which is a wonderful thing, not only being a councilperson, but being a volunteer with our SERC group. Basically, what we were doing, we have, we certainly set up, we have two groups. We have what I call my React team, which you're looking at. Whenever I need somebody in a hurry, they're always there. And then I have my long-term team, which basically would be used like in a sheltering situation for long-term. And 35-member team, they're well-trained. We're here to help police department, we're here to help the fire department, and most of all, we're here to help the people in township of West Orange. And basically, that's what we're all about. Whatever they need, we're here. That's our motto.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ken. And I, I believe you were serving hot meals to the community for lunch and dinner at one point in time.
Absolutely.
Very good.
So thank you so much to all your volunteers. And yesterday, we're, we're going to show some pictures in a minute when I bring Cynthia Cummings on. But you were there once again yesterday, you and your team assisting down at the Holy Trinity Food Pantry with some important turkey and, and food giveaways. So thank you so much for, for once again, helping out the community.
It's our pleasure, that's what we're here for.
Thank you. And next, we have Cynthia Cummings, representing the Holy Trinity, the West Orange Holy Trinity Food Pantry. And this past year, again, Food Pantry has been a staple in our community for quite a few years now under the leadership of Cynthia, with much assistance from Chris Mbitzki, her husband Doug, and Karen Bottinger. And Cynthia will name the rest of her volunteers. And what a need last February, actually February, beginning of March, when we first started, saw this pandemic coming. Laura and Laura Van Dyke in our senior services department and Cynthia made a great connection in getting food out to our most vulnerable residents. And we just appreciate that so much. And the efforts that were made by so many in the community, so many volunteers donating, whether it was food or money or even their time down at the food pantry. So we just want to bring those few pictures on. Here we go, and I'm going to bring Cynthia on. Hi Cynthia.
Hey.
Hey, just give me one second, I'm having a little issue with the sheriff. Just keep talking.
Okay, maybe you talk a little bit about some of the other volunteers that were down helping you.
Yeah, we have.
On a consistent basis.
Yeah, we have our, our core group of people from United Presbyterian that have been working with us for, I would think, like the past at least five years. So, and the Wimmins Club has started sending volunteers out on a regular basis. And then we have people from the community that volunteer. You know, Ann McKeon's been out and, and, I mean, just like some people that will come every week and help us with whatever we need help with. So, all right, let's see, I'm looking at these pictures. At top, that picture is yesterday morning, Laura will talk about it. We, the township did a turkey distribution from our location yesterday morning. And so that was that in the, during the daytime. And then we did our turkey distribution last night. And I think, and we, we get our turkeys from the food bank, and then we have to depend on the community for the rest. And this year, the community got us, I, I want to say like nearly 400 turkeys. And we gave out close to 500 turkeys between last night and today.
Oh, wow.
Side bags. So we were, we were very, very, very busy, enjoying our, our two days of Turkey Palooza, as I like to call them.
And prior to that, earlier in the year, if you would just want to talk a little bit about the numbers you were serving during, during the pandemic, I mean, it got to a point.
Well, the numbers are pretty, yeah, they're pretty much the same. We've been open every week since the middle of March. And we went from providing food for about 400 people a month to 1,000 people a week. And it hasn't not changed since the middle of March. I mean, there's some weeks more, some weeks a little less, but that is our average number on a weekly basis. And it's still that way, so.
And I have to say, being down there, you are a well-oiled machine with your army of volunteers.
Yeah, we, we, we had to get a little bit more cold-blooded on how to organize down there, just to keep it all going, yeah.
And I know you've had our, our police officers and firefighters assisting you as well, which is, has been great. And what do you see moving forward? I know now you're down to, I believe, one, one day, this is also from yesterday, this picture, this was our SERC team helping out yesterday. You are down to one day a week. What are your hours now?
Okay, oh, now there's the football team. They came down with the help with the turkeys when they came in yesterday from the tap, the Barry Geltziler Turkey Connection.
Great.
And those are crates. That's just some of what we were doing, those pictures. We're open every Tuesday from 9:00 to 12:00. And the last Monday of the month, we do what we call Diaper Day, where we'll hand out diapers, wipes, baby food, and formula as we have it. We, we just can't do it on a weekly basis, it's too much.
Yeah.
You know, there's a big need out there. And if people are on food stamps, they don't, they can't get diapers and things like that with food stamps. So, you know, there's like a lot of need and it hasn't changed. A lot of the people that come to the pantry are, I think, in the hospitality industry or they were in, they were in jobs that they were, you know, like going to be the first level of people to get let go. And they're not all back to work by a long shot, so.
And will you be having another drive for the Christmas holidays?
Oh, I don't know. We're, we're trying to do like toiletries now so that everybody can get an extra, you know, something for the holidays, like it's, we do toiletry bags with socks, so I say that. I mean, I'll, I'll post it on our Holy Trinity West Orange Food Pantry Facebook page, you can follow us there.
Great, great. And, and we have on the screen where you can make a donation?
Yeah, you can mail it. And if you, we do also have a general church website, holytrinitywo.org, and you can donate online from there if you want to.
Okay, well Cynthia, please thank all your volunteers. We appreciate all, all of your efforts, all of you for, you know, feeding our community, being safe while doing so. That's the other impressive thing, with all the numbers you have been feeding, you haven't even, I don't want to knock on wood here, but.
No, no, I, I know, I think about it all the time. Not one of us has gotten sick so far, so. And we're hoping to keep it that way.
Well, you've been very safe and careful and I'm sure, you know, someone upstairs is watching over you. So you are angels of the community. And thank you all for all that you've been doing for us, so.
No problem.
Keep up the good work and we'll have the community keep sending donations your way, so.
Well, it takes a village and we have one in the, in the form of West Orange. That's all I can say.
Well, thank you so much. Before I let all of yous go, I just, I'd be remiss of me if I didn't let my colleagues say a few words for all of your efforts. I'll start with Councilman Guarino.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you to all the volunteers and volunteer organizations highlighted tonight. Yes, West Orange does take a village and all these four organizations make a part of our village that makes West Orange a town that it really is, that makes up for all the differences that we have and pulls us all together. And I sincerely thank each and every one of you. To Rob and Stacy and Finn, you know, being part of the farmers market with downtown and, you know, I'll always be there for you. You made it happen. You turned something that could have been disaster, could have fell apart because of COVID-19, but you made it happen. And it's what you've done and how your perseverance and what you've done as a family and as a group, you pulled it all together and you gave the residents of West Orange and even some of the residents from neighboring towns, something to do on a Saturday morning. And particularly during those first eight weeks with just the carpooling, it worked. And you should be very, very proud of what you did. And you're setting a great example for Finn of what he should do as he grows up, which you're also setting a great example for the youth of West Orange and what they need to do as they grow up. Camille, thank you. I, you know, sharing part of Pleasant Valley Productions and then being part of your family has been an extremely great honor. I became a great bartender, thanks to Joe McCartney. So you look forward to those exciting things and you brought entertainment and fun and you gave the people of West Orange and other residents who came out, something to do on a nice evening, something to really bring the stress levels down, something to make them feel this is what West Orange is all about, but also sharing your talent, Camille, and the talent of all the members and the volunteers of Pleasant Valley Productions, and using our great OSPAC facility to show what you can really do on a shoestring budget. And you pulled it all together. And Camille, I thank you and I'll always be there for you and PVPA. And Camille, I thank you. And I'll always be there for you and PVPA. It's, it's been an honor and a pleasure. Sir, Ken, you know, what can I say after what everybody else has said and what you've said? You've given a service to the community. You've given an opportunity for other people to volunteer and give back to our community. Camille said, you know, it does take a village. I mean, Cynthia said, too, it takes a village. And that's a part of it. And even when you were up and when you're down, you still gave your best. And the CERT organization is a very proud organization, particularly working with my great West Orange Fire Department. And we look forward to more and more things for you to do. And we hope you have many, many more years to give that volunteer service to the township of West Orange. And I'll always be there for you, too, as well. And Cynthia, you feed the, the people of West Orange. And a lot of people don't realize how bad it is out there. You know, people are still working, who are fortunate to still working, people still have money to buy food. People don't have to worry about when they open their refrigerators that there's nothing in there. And you've given that the opportunity that you've given of yourself, you've given of the village of West Orange, to help people who don't have that. You look back and you look at what you've done, you look at the pictures, you look at the lines. And it makes you thankful for what you have, no matter how much or how small. But, you know, it's having people like you, like yourself, like your organization, and the people that donate. It shows what we're really about. And as I've said and repeated, it shows exactly what West Orange is all about. And I personally thank you for keeping it going, for doing above and beyond of stretching out and making it happen. And I know it's hard for you sometimes, because you could never say no. You could never turn somebody away, because that's just not you. And we're very grateful. And of course, I'll be there, whatever I can do, you know, for you, because it's, it's important. Because I think a lot of our residents don't realize how bad it is out there, that how bad it's going to get. But some people are still working. Some people can still go to ShopRite and buy those groceries, and buy those goodies, and buy the junk food. But there are people who wake up every morning and look at their children and say, how am I going to send this child off to their day without any food? But Cynthia, it's you, it's Food Bank, that at least helps as many people as you can. Because that's the hardest thing. You could never say no. And thank you, and God bless you for, for what you do. And thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to thank these fine people.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Kukrovjak.
Thank you, Council President. I think Councilman Garino covered every inch of the issue, and I thank him. So I can be much more brief. I just want to say thank you to each of the organizations and each of the volunteers. You guys should feel great about your contribution to the community. And you should be certain that your contribution is greatly appreciated by many people in town. And each of you have contributed to making West Orange an even better place to live. And I thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman J. Brown?
Thank you, Council President. And, and to both my colleagues who spoke in advance of, of my turn, I have to say that I echo all of their sentiments and am very grateful and appreciative to live in a community where so many of you put yourselves out to make sure that the rest of us are all okay. I know that these times are very frightening times. And you continue to show up. And I, I don't know where so many of us would be without your generous hearts. I, I appreciate Council President bringing everyone on to acknowledge you publicly, and thank you publicly for going that extra mile now, and, and as you have continued to do before now, but even more so during this pandemic, at a time where so many people are in need. It, it's just, it makes me very proud to live in a community where so many show up and support each other. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. I also want to say thank you to you for bringing on the, the members of these organizations that have contributed so much of their time and effort. And it's also a thank you to the community that supported these organizations to provide all of those turkeys. I love the picture of the football team. It was almost like training for them to be lugging those turkeys, which is what we were doing yesterday. We were very heavy. Just, my husband and I, I was pleased and proud to be able to serve on the CERT team to deliver food to residents. And again, thanking people that donated to the Mayor Sunshine Fund that provided all of that food. So it's a dual thank you to the community and all of the efforts. Pleasant Valley Productions, that was just excellent programming. And the aerial view of Crystal Lake and Auspack, just, it really looked so beautiful. So I'm thrilled that you're there and, and continue. Even under these horrible conditions, it was still excellent programming all summer. Thank you. And Rob and Stacy really just bringing the community out, providing so many choices of organic and fresh foods for our community. Thank you. Really, I feel proud to be here in West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And thank you again to all our guests this evening. You've gone above and beyond. We appreciate your creativity, your concern for our community. And we are thankful for you. And, and we wish you all happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Absolutely. Happy Thanksgiving. Safe and healthy.
Yes. And before we're going to go, our, our next presenter, I just want to say real quick, we have a COVID night, you know, I'm going to give a COVID-19 update. When we had the, when I was thinking of who to bring on for Walk the Extra Mile, and when we, you know, we had just gotten through the, the last four groups. I also just, you know, just want to give a shout out to all our youth program coaches this past fall, and even all our coaches at the high school level. So many of our students, our young athletes were able to go out and have a safe season because of all of your efforts. And I couldn't bring everyone on the program this evening, because we have our, our business that we're going to be late for as usual. But just wanted to recognize all the youth coaches out there volunteering their time to keep our youth athletes safe this past fall and this past summer. It's because of you. So many children were able to be out and about in the community and just escaping some of the stresses of this pandemic. So thank to all of you for walking that extra mile. So with that, COVID-19 is still upon us. But now, as you could see from the fast, our past four presenters, we, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to do what we can and keep powering through. So with that in mind, I want to bring our Senior Service Program Coordinator, Laura Van Dyke, on the call. Hi Laura.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. Thank you, Council President. Great to be here and all the council members. Just to note, I can't see if anything is being shown with any kind, just FYI.
So, so first, I just wanted, we, we're going to put up for you, I didn't tell you about this part. So we just have some of the COVID information to share with the community on how, how to stay in touch and with alerts. So if you just want to share that with the community.
Great. So I can't see what you're showing.
Okay, okay. Sorry, though you can see. Okay, so I'll just tell you real quick. So we have State of New Jersey COVID-19 info. And so we have the link. We have the medical COVID-19 question hotline, the 800 number. And you could text New Jersey COVID with the number there on the screen to receive alerts. So for anyone looking for any information, we also, you could just go right to the township website as well. So with that, Laura, you were very busy yesterday, working in conjunction with Cynthia. So you could explain about the event we had yesterday, and, and how, you know, you've been serving the community and how we're going to move forward this winter with the pandemic.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll, I'll keep it brief. But so, yes, yesterday was, as Camille said, a pivot. Typically, the annual Mayor Sunshine Fund Thanksgiving Food Drive is typically delivered to our residents' homes with Department of Public Works making those deliveries. Because of COVID, it, it had to switch to a pickup scenario. And the Holy Trinity Food Pantry, that's been our collaborator, incredible collaborator these past nine months, was the natural place for the, for the distribution site. And this is an event where many of the names we get for families in need are through the schools. So we made the pivot. Cynthia, regardless of how much is on her plate, is always saying yes. And as does CERT, just saying, we're available to be the support. DPW's pivoted, and, you know, and we came to the food pantry where we greeted people. And then ultimately, you know, it wasn't, you know, sometimes that communication, we're learning, as this was the one-year pivot. So then we did ultimately, just in some instances, make, make some spot deliveries where we could and provide turkeys where we could. So it was a, a great success. Some of the council members came and volunteered. And again, just to really make that, that circular connection, it's the donations from the community that fund the Mayor Sunshine Fund that enables us to to give it right back to the community. So it really is this very, you know, comprehensive kind of collaborative support for, that we're a part of, just making that happen, keeping those, those wheels spinning. So it was another very successful event. And I'm so grateful for everyone's support. So.
Well, excuse me, Laura, our Metamoderator, there it is. Okay. So now we have on your office phone number, the website, and to go right to the Mayor Sunshine Fund, right on the website for donations. So. Which is great. And Laura, what are some of the events coming up for our senior programs?
Perfect. So I just wanted to mention that the big push this past kind of summer into the fall was to really, when we recognized we were not going to be going back indoors, was to really help our seniors and community members get comfortable with Zoom. So we got a great resource, a tech, tech expert from our Community Coalition, where we share resources. Tara Gray created a, a video that we have emailed to our seniors that is available on TV 36 and 45, Mondays and Sundays and Mondays at 8:30 in the morning, and Thursday mornings at 10. And it's a tutorial instructional video on how to Zoom. And we can also email it to people. So that, and we've shared it with neighboring communities in our collaborative spirit. So they've been able to share it with, with, with their residents as needed. So this has been the push, because our programming, our recreation classes, we've kept outside some of our aerobics and yoga. If it's a 50-degree day, they're still going outside. If it's rainy, a day like today, we're pivoting to Zoom. We're taking it day by day. And our seniors are so inspiring. Some are getting smartphones for the first time. They're Zooming. And we're, we're crawling forward. So that's been our effort. Then we've, we've had some, in collaboration with the library, we had a mental health series in October. Three sessions in collaboration also with the Academy of Clinical and Applied Psychoanalysis on Mental Health. We've had Medicare Choices, Senior Freeze, all by Zoom. We currently have a Sing for Hope Concert Series with our Broadway performers, who aren't, aren't on Broadway right now, are on, on this Sing for Hope Concert Series. We have, in December, we have three dates coming up. And, and again, you can email me, call me, we can send you that information. And then we had, we had an art class, and I just want to share this. I hope this can come up. We had an art class with Donna Drew. And we're, we're doing this collaborative project that really promotes this notion that we're stronger together. So we, where people are, you, you make a design of your hand, and then you, and then you take a picture and you send it to us. And we're, we're putting together like a virtual, a virtual collage of this notion. And it's intergenerational. We have a few extra kits. So if someone wants one, call me, I'll send you one. And we'll have Donna do another class in the future. But as you can see, it's this kind of thing. So when we can be in person, like our recreational classes, we will be. And then we're, we're, we're using Zoom to get us through the winter. We also are wanting to really help people prepare in advance. So we created this 20 Suggestions Emergency Preparedness Kit. Department of Health printed them on cardstock. So if you want like a hard copy, I can get that to you. But it's a great way to, again, just sort of, as people have done in the past nine months, when people, when, when people couldn't get those food deliveries, we really needed to lean on the food pantry and CERT to deliver the food. And then over that time, people have been able to kind of manage those needs on their own. And, and that's the goal, to plan ahead. So that's been another focus. Let's see. And when, and then we have some strategies. We have some kind of creative solutions for transportation that supports the West Orange transportation, as well as Essex County. So when those options aren't working for a person, we, we, including a relationship with GoGoGrandparents. So we're just working to kind of really keep assessing the needs of the community, keep our finger on the pulse, and then say, okay, hey, we, we need a solution for this. So we work closely with the Department of Health. And the, as the numbers are what they are, families, family needs, those, those needs come to our attention. Just two more points. Lastly, we've, as you know, during the past few months, we became, we received the Age Friendly Community Designation given by our AARP and the World Health Organization. So we're working closely with our neighboring communities throughout the state, who, and learning from their successes and strategies as we're continuing to evaluate programming and service needs. And lastly, just, we would love to increase our email list. That's the primary way we are reaching out to people. Mailings occur much less. So you could give, give us a call, 973-325-4105, and we'll add you to our email list. And any of this information I've just talked about today, I'd be happy to speak further with anyone about.
Well, great. Thank you so much, Laura. I mean, your, your department, working with Dorothy and Noelia. You've been instrumental in, again, preparing everyone as we enter the colder months. And just even preparing them for, you know, positive, being positive, staying upbeat. The Zoom is great, because not only could they enjoy, folks enjoy a lot of the programming that we have, but also they can learn how to chat with each other and, and, and see each other for times when you may want to stay in and not go out so much. So we thank you for all your efforts that you're all working on. We appreciate it. And we're, we're thankful to you. And, and thank you also for always walking that extra mile.
Absolutely. And, and Michelle, I don't, did I mention Dorothy Sanders and Noelia Perez? If I didn't at the beginning, I meant that. Thank you. You just did. But I can't remember if I did.
That's okay. It was a lot of great information. We appreciate it. We're, we're packing it all in. So I, I know, I appreciate you being quick, too. So thank, thank you, Laura, for coming on. And have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Michelle.
And with that, we're going to turn to Mr. Sayers. I'm not sure if you have anything, update on redevelopment?
Actually, the only thing I have is I got the, they're up to renting 246 units, which is about 75% of the units that are rented. There's nothing new with the commercial space at all, from what Mr. Diaz talked to me about this morning. And he said to me that he spoke to you about that we're going to have a meeting with him in Origami to try and set up what they're going to do with Baste.
Yes, yes. So that he said he would pick a night to, to come on the meeting with our colleagues. So hopefully, we could get that done soon. Thank you, Mr. Sayers. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Sayers?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. And with that, Councilman Garino, your liaison, any liaison announcements?
Thank you.
I actually have one up there for you, for your, there you go.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Council President. Yes, West Orange, as we move forward with additional improvements to our Street Smart and our Complete Streets program, West Orange will be kicking off at December 15th. Our Street Smart Campaign, our Street Smart Campaign is basically making people aware of the different programs that we are doing and that we're applying to do to make West Orange a walkable and safe community for both our pedestrians and our drivers. We'll be kicking off. Will be kicking it off, be taking place in council chambers with a presentation from members of New Jersey TPA, people, members of my pedestrian safety advisory board and the police department. And we'll be kicking it off and it'll be a downtown event on Main Street, at Main Street and Harrison to kick off the event with signage and programs. But also the most important thing of this program is to fill out the survey. And the survey is available at the West Orange Board of Education website. It's available to township website and the downtown West Orange Alliance website and the pedestrian safety advisory board website. Please go to those sites, fill out the survey. It's in both English and Spanish. It's the only way we're going to be able to know what direction we need to continue to go into, to fulfill our Complete Streets commitments. And so we're looking forward to our residents' participation. I know my board is. And we're really excited about being recognized by Easy Ride and New Jersey TPA for this great ability and the support that we get from the West Orange Police Department and my volunteers on pedestrian safety advisory board. So that's what we're looking forward, which is coming up. Also, I know at the next meeting, we'll be introducing the downtown West Orange Alliance budget. I hope people take a look at it and see what's been accomplished on Main Street. Main Street's in a lot better shape than it was eight years ago. It can be better, not saying anything different. It can be better and hopefully we're building the building blocks to make it better. And we just look forward to people's participation. So look at the budget, ask the questions. Reach out to Executive Vector Megan Brill to ask her questions, particularly when it comes to getting help. I know our board is doing the best we can to help our merchants who right now are feeling the pinch, particularly our small merchants who we need to support. And do remember, coming up will be Shop Small nationwide. And we ask you to shop small in West Orange, not only using your American Express card, but using any forms of payment. But you need to support our merchants. You need to take a walk downtown or through all parts of West Orange and buy stuff from our vendors to, you know, go and have an outdoor meal, do takeout. Whatever you can do to support our merchants, because it's going to, no matter how many grants are out there, that money is gone in twenty-four minutes. Every grant that's gone up, it disappears because there are just too many people in need. So we, as a community, need to support our merchants. You need to patronize our people. And I'm not begging you, I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you to don't complain that we don't have stores in West Orange or anything else. Because if we don't support them, we don't patronize them, you know, they're not going to exist. This is going to be a terrible time. You thought the first part of COVID nineteen was bad? You haven't seen the second part. A lot of merchants are feeling the pinch. Think of this. Think of the fact that these people have used their life savings and their earnings and they put it into their business. And they're not asking much, just asking you to patronize them. And that's all I'm asking you to do. Is to, you know, you can talk out of both sides of your mouth and want to do things, but you don't. But you know what? Instead of driving out of the community to a neighboring town to buy something, find that online. Go to the West Orange Downtown Alliance website and see all the merchants and what they offer. You may find something here in West Orange that you can't find someplace else. You have many bakeries, you know, Willow and Olivia, you know, Schneider Hardware, you know, patronize these people, Sam's Chicken. You know, it's just unbelievable. With here, Supreme Bakery, you know, there are so many things in West Orange that you can patronize and without going out of town. Yes, you go to ShopRite, but there are other stores in West Orange, not only the downtown corridor, but also Pleasantale and St. Cloud. These merchants need us. And of any time, you know, and don't wait for the government to help them because you know what, like you see, people put the grants out online and in twenty-four minutes, that money is gone. So we need to reach out. And Council President, my colleagues, I apologize, but the thing is, it's very, very important that our residents know that if these businesses fail, you think there's empty storefronts now, there'll be even more empty storefronts. But think, these are your neighbors, these are your friends. Most of these merchants live and active in this community. And anytime that we've asked them for donations, when they've asked them to supply gifts and food for an event, these people, these merchants have never said no. So don't say no to them. And that's all I can ask. So between pedestrian safety to make us a walkable community, it's something I'm very proud of and very proud of my board. And I have committed to my board that I am not leaving. I will still be involved with my pedestrian safety board. But I'm asking you to also for our merchants, whether downtown Pleasantale, St. Cloud, Main Street, anywhere, I'm asking you to patronize them, to give them whatever you can. Because at the end of the day, when you have an event for schools or for your sports teams or for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and everything else, don't go asking for donations from them because you know what, they may not be there anymore. And thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That was very passionate and very, I know it came right from your heart. Councilman Kukoviac.
Thank you, Council President. I agree with Councilman Guarino's sentiment. I try. I try to spend as much money in town as I can and I think it's very, very important. So I appreciate Councilman Guarino bringing that up. In terms of the ASOM reports, I don't have anything for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Just, I feel like we're inching along, but we're inching along with the OS pack, the OS pack board. I understand that they've narrowed down a few dates for their very first meeting and they will be sending over that date to Madam Clerk so that it can be properly advertised. I understand that the meeting will happen sometime in December. I believe that once they settle on the dates and the format with which they have available to them, it's open to the public and I look forward to their first meeting. But that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney? I think we have a slide for you.
Okay. What's up first?
Toys.
Oh, wow. All right. We'll start with the Environmental Commission. All right. So here's our members of the Environmental Commission and Bobby DeMayo from DPW, who was so enthusiastic to help us. It was a pleasure to work with him. So this is something that started two years ago where the West Orange Environmental Commission partnered with Second Chance Toys. It appealed to me to start this partnership because all of that plastic, all of those plastic toys stay out of landfills. But Second Chance Toys is affiliated with twelve different charitable organizations. So when residents are donating things they don't use anymore, keeping them out of the landfill, we will now coordinate that with Second Chance Toys. It's going to be a timely delivery right before the holidays. So that, the trailer is up at five-ninety Mount Pleasant Avenue at the Environmental Commission, at the Environmental Center. What we're doing, I guess the picture on the left there, what we're doing, you know, I appreciate people are sending things and donating things, but if they're not boxed or bagged, we had to sort through that trailer and try to get as much of it put back together. So I don't want to sound ungrateful, but it would be so helpful if people are going to donate stuff to keep it all together so that we can in turn send it off to one of those charitable organizations affiliated with Second Chance Toys. It was a beautiful day and it worked out well. So it will be just in time for the holidays to donate those things.
Great.
I'm not sure if your next flyer made it through the chamber.
Oh, okay. So again, very timely and inspiring message. The West Orange Chamber has an annual Thanksgiving luncheon. I don't even know for how many years that they have been doing this, again, partnering with Unico, Rotary, Lions Club, all the other service organizations at noon the day before Thanksgiving. This year will be virtual, a message by Gino Blafari. So I invite everyone, it's free. I invite everyone to visit westorangechamber.com, westorangechamber.com. Noon, well, you have to register first. So go there first, register and the message is tomorrow. Wednesday, sorry, I'll tell you the date, Wednesday at noon, November twenty-fifth.
Great.
What else? West Orange, oh, I don't know what else you have, but Western Arts Council?
Yeah.
Okay, so they, well, the West Orange Arts Council, again, visit their website because they're still, even during COVID, they have, there is a call for artists out right now for, if you can create something with found items called Obje Tru Bay. And last Saturday, I had the Star Ledger here, there was an article in the Star Ledger in the Today section about the in-person exhibit for the Latino artists. That's still going on till this weekend, November twenty-eighth. So the gallery is open for this. Again, safely controlling the number of people that came in, come in one door and go right out the back at five-five-five Valley Road.
Great.
Visit, please visit western, W-O-A-R-S dot org for information about the upcoming exhibits.
Great.
And also let's support our troops. I don't know if Suzanne Pennell and Donald Pennell are on, but they also have been collecting not only Halloween candy, but hygiene products and puzzle books and word puzzles and things for the troops. I myself collected a lot of stuff at my school from my families. And again, thanking the community for donating so many things. I have no idea what their living room and garage looks like at this point because there were other locations. And we are using the recreation storage house at the town pool to sort and ship all of these items. We can support our troops. It costs about twenty dollars to ship all the boxes out. So always donations are always greatly appreciated. And the planning board had two special meetings scheduled last week. On Tuesday, November seventeenth, the board voted unanimously on our fair share housing plan. You know, took years and prepared in large part by Shirley Bishop that helped with our affordable housing plan. And last Wednesday and Thursday, we heard from higher gruel on the executive drive redevelopment study. And the planning board again voted unanimously to designate ten Rooney Circle, one hundred executive drive and two hundred executive drive as an area in need of redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Okay, so our West Orange Recreation Department has been working really hard and to be creative. As we all know, the first Saturday of each month is usually the mayor's tree lighting at Township Hall. We usually have many activities during the day, starting with breakfast with Santa. But this year we had again pivot. I guess the word for the evening is pivot. So the Recreation Department, Candy Myrick, Edwin Johnson and Bill Keough, we are going to do a drive-through Santa. So Santa will be at Town Hall on Saturday night, December fifth at six-thirty. The mayor will be there lighting the tree. That part will be done virtually. If you get there at six-thirty and you're lined up down Mount Pleasant and along Main Street, you will be able, you'll be there for when the lighting goes on, but it will be on Facebook. So you'll be able to see it live as you're waiting and they have all sorts of little entertainment as you're waiting to drive through to see Santa on Town Hall. So we did not want to deprive the children and cancel Christmas, the holiday. So we are looking forward to that. So we thank you to the Recreation Department. Also, you can write a letter to Santa this year and drop it off at the town pool. There'll be a big mailbox there. And so that'll be accepting letters and they'll get them off to the North Pole by December eighteen. So between November twenty-eighth and December eighteen, you'll be able to drop your child's letter at the Township Pool. Also, if you go to the website at westorange.org for the holidays on the Recreation Department site, there's also a virtual gingerbread house contest. I don't have the visual there. But a lot of great, unique ideas. I know Sherri Quirk is working with our rabbis on a menorah lighting. So we're just going to try to be creative as we celebrate the holidays here in the township. And, you know, my colleague, Councilman Guarino, was just very passionate about supporting our local vendors. And I had prepared unbeknownst to him, we'll be pushing out the Shop Small because, you know, Saturday would be the usual day when we all walk down Main Street and go shopping every year. And it's just a great day, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. This year, you could still frequent your store safely. But as he stated, you know, online, takeout, and we're really pushing gift cards. So, you know, shopping's a little tough this year for everyone, going in the malls and whatnot. Remember to shop local and our restaurant owners, talk to many of them. They have gift cards available. Great gift, especially for that person that is hard to shop for. What better than to give them a restaurant gift card to one of our restaurants here in the township? So again, all of us, you know, we support, you know, shop small to one of our local restaurants and stores this holiday season. I skipped over the calendar for two thousand twenty-one. So I apologize, going batting out of order. But before we go to the general meeting, I just want to make sure no one had a conflict. We had sent this out. We didn't make an announcement. We'll do that next week because it came in. The election results came in after the agenda was posted over the weekend. But congratulations to Tammy Williams, who will be joining us here in January as well as Bill Rutherford on their election efforts. So we had sent them, Madam Clerk had sent them out these dates so my colleagues know. But if anybody has any conflicts that you know of, I know Madam Clerk looked at all the holidays to see, you know, when we can have them, especially in September, October, to make sure we were sensitive to all religious holidays. So I appreciate her efforts there. Sometimes we get limited of the dates. We can't have the meeting because of the holidays and the long weekend. So if anyone has a major conflict, you could speak now. Any Councilman Kukoviac?
I am happy to report that for the first time in ten years, I know, I'm certain that I have no conflict next year's schedule.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilwomen, any conflicts for either one of you? Okay, great.
I didn't see any. Thank you.
Okay, and our future colleagues, they, Madam Clerk had instructed them to get in touch with her. We always make an amendment, the first meeting in January. So with that, I appreciate everyone for this extra-long conference agenda, but just very important to recognize all our great volunteers and a special extra thanks to even our wonderful employees throughout this pandemic, throughout the year. PDW, the rec, our firefighters, police office, health department, our West Orange Public Library and our property maintenance people have been out there and about. And we just hope everyone stays safe as we move forward and thank everyone for all their efforts. So with that, we will move to the public meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to, this is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two-thirty-one, Public Law nineteen-seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in Township Clerk's office on October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November seventh, two thousand nineteen. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Castellino.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And welcome to anyone who has just recently joined us. We're going to start off with our public comment. For those of you new to the meeting, you will have five minutes to address the council. The moderator will welcome you in. And as soon as you come on, if you could please state your name and your address. You will have five minutes and then we will address you after everyone speaks. So we try to get everyone in first to speak and then the council will address you at the very end when the last person is done. So Madam Moderator, what do we have this evening?
Thank you very much. Yes. So if you would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. If you're one of our call in attendees, it's star nine and you only have to press it once. You will be put in the queue. It also helps for us. You can hit the button now. You don't have to wait for anyone to stop talking. It does put you in a queue. So first we have Mr. Fagan. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening and greetings, Madam Council President and members of the town council. Tonight I have just a few brief announcements of items of interest to West Orange residents that have not been mentioned. Number one, as we enter our ninth month of COVID restrictions, many West Orange households have no doubt felt the impact of financial challenges in their daily life. I'd like to point out that New Jersey American Water Company, which supplies water to West Orange, has available assistance programs for those customers having difficulty paying their bills. A virtual seminar was held last week online, but it was recorded and now available on their website for customers to review and watch anytime to learn more details on how to apply for financial relief regarding their water bills. Other utility companies likely have similar programs available. So I would suggest to contact them if you find yourself having difficulty making payments during this crisis. I also received a press relief, a press release from Public Service Electric and Gas, notifying customers that utility scams have been on the rise and often target senior citizens. I would like to pass this scam alert on to West Orange residents. Some signs of the potential scam activity are a threat to disconnect, request for immediate payment, in-person payment demands, and requests for credit card information over the phone. I'm certainly summarizing, but want to simply point out in all circumstances, let common sense prevail. If you have any questions at all regarding if a phone call is legitimate, take pause and request a callback number. The West Orange Police Department is still receiving reports of car burglaries. I would like to remind all residents that this is usually a crime of opportunity and to please remember to lock your car doors and remove any valuables from sight. Finally, we have experienced many changes in our daily lives over the last nine months due to the worldwide pandemic. Despite our individual circumstances, we all still have a lot to be grateful for. As we celebrate Thanksgiving later this week, either together or apart from our family and loved ones, let us all pause to take a moment to focus on the many things that we do have to be grateful for in our lives. Therefore, Madam Council President, members of the town council administration, and anyone within the sound of my voice, I would like to wish you all a sincere and heartfelt wish for a happy Thanksgiving by the deepest measure possible. Together and collectively, we will forge ahead to a better tomorrow where COVID restrictions will soon be a distant memory in our rearview mirrors. Lastly, on this day in West Orange history, a 61-year chapter came to a close. On November 24, 1983, the West Orange Cowboys at the old West Orange High School on Northfield Avenue played their final football game. Thank you, Madam Council President. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Fagan, and we are thankful for you. Thank you. You're, you're a treasure to our community.
Okay, next we have Emma Svetvilius. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Emma Svetvilius and I live on Prospect Avenue in West Orange.
Hi.
I spoke for you. Hi. I spoke before you recently and I appreciate the positive responses you offered, not just me, but my fellow students. I'm a senior at West Orange High School and I'm here today regarding a similar concern I spoke about last time. Trees, specifically the continued removal of healthy and beneficial trees in our town. I'm concerned not only for our environment, but the role our town has in protecting it. I just learned that six healthy ash trees owned by the town are set to be chopped down on Rollinson Street to install new curbs and sidewalks. I understand that ash trees are susceptible to invasive insects, but that is not what is threatening these trees. These trees are slated to be destroyed in the name of asphalt, concrete, and Belgium block. As I've mentioned previously before you, I care deeply about the trees in our town. They not only play a huge role in combating global warming, but benefit our town as a whole. I love going on walks around my neighborhood and seeing all of the beautiful trees, especially during the fall when the leaves are changing. I even enjoy raking leaves and as a child earned a penny a stick by collecting them throughout our yard. By allowing the needless destruction of trees on Rollinson Street, you are diminishing not only the beauty of West Orange, but the air quality and property values these beautiful trees bring to the neighborhood. When trees are removed, problems arise such as a reduction in shade and cooling, a reduction in the screening trees provide to residents' privacy, negatively impacting how stormwater is managed. And since soil no longer has the help of root systems, erosion increases. Trees truly do enhance our township's beauty, value, and quality of life. Considering all of the benefits they bring, please reconsider destroying the six trees on Rollinson. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Emma. And just so the folks in the audience know, for the sake of time, I have Mr. Lepore here. As soon as public comments over, he will be speaking regards to Rollinson Street. So if anyone else has any comments in regards to that, if you like, you, you know, you could hold off. But he will be speaking and giving us an updated report to the, to the council and the community. So thank, thank, thank you. I forgot to mention that before public comments started. Go ahead, Madam Moderator, if you want to bring the next speaker on.
Sure. Michaela Bennett, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Michaela Bennett on Old Indian Road. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, since you mentioned that the election results have been finalized, I really wanted to begin by thanking Councilman Garino and Councilman Kukoviac for their service. You know, public service is often thankless and very much appreciated, at least in this house. And so your service to our community is very much appreciated and I wanted to acknowledge that. I know that there will be other meetings, but just in the event that I missed them, I wanted to make sure I said that. In the spirit of the season, I wanted to thank all of you for your service as well and wish you all a happy, safe, and peaceful Thanksgiving. This is, 2020 has been an interesting year. And so I hope that however you decide to celebrate Thanksgiving, that it is revitalizing and refreshing because you're all working very hard under the circumstances. I did want to raise concerns regarding executive drive. And the planning board meeting that I had the opportunity to attend and speak at, not surprisingly, there was a unanimous vote to determine the area in need of redevelopment. That was not surprising to me. But what was surprising to me was the departure from the longstanding practice where the public was permitted to cross-examine witnesses and present their own case. And I raised that with you for two reasons. That change, that departure was ushered in by the attorney who you authorized hiring. And it concerns me for these two reasons. One, you decided to retain the services of an attorney based on a presentation, I believe by the township attorney, who described the need for special expertise. But the only issue that that attorney addressed was the silencing of the public. And I want you to consider the specific history of this project, Executive Drive. I want you to consider the fact that the only reason why this property was back in front of the planning board was because the appellate court found in favor of the cross-examination of the public and identified that the planning board, the township council, and the lower court had erred. And so the idea that you would have, number one, sent this back to the planning board, and number two, hi, you authorized hiring an attorney to silence the public, I thought was important to bring to your attention. And then the only other issue that I wanted to address tonight was the agenda item that you'll be discussing regarding borrow releasing or permitting funds to be released in order to pay for unanticipated individuals who left their employment and you didn't anticipate having to pay out for their vacation days that they had accrued and amassed. I'd just like to bring to the council's attention that more than one township employee brought to my attention the fact that a township employee left their employment, was permitted to resign after having been accused for the third time of sexual harassment. And I would hope that we are not permitting that travesty to occur and compounding the travesty by then paying for vacation days accrued by that individual. I think it's extremely important to consider the wake of sexual harassment and the impact that it has on the remaining employees of this township to have watched for several years, this individual behaved badly and for it to perpetuate on multiple occasions. And then rather than do the right thing and terminate that employee and any opportunity that employee has to receive their vacation days, et cetera, terminate them for their behavior. Instead, we permitted this individual to resign. And now I suspect you will be paying for the vacation days that that individual accrued. It's really unfortunate that we can't comport ourselves with a much more progressive platform on sexual harassment and make sure that the message that we give to the remaining employees who had to witness and endure that behavior is one that comports with survivorship and keeping a workplace free from these sorts of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Raimi Svetvilius. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Raimi Svetvilius and I live on Prospect Avenue.
Hi, Raimi.
I'm a sophomore at West Orange High School and I'm extremely concerned for the trees that are going to get cut down on Rollinson Street. I like going on walks with my dog and family and I know many people in my neighborhood also enjoy going. With kids spending at least four and a half hours staring at a screen every day during Zoom during craft and then staring at that same screen for hours afterwards when we're trying to get our homework done, we don't get to go outside a lot. When we go outdoors, looking at nature, especially the trees during this fall, it's a nice break to get away from screens. I would hope that the town would want to save every tree possible, but unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be the case. Moving forward with chopping the healthy trees down when it is unnecessary is ridiculous. Every tree, even ones that are in poor condition are valuable. Two of my classmates went to see the trees that are supposedly in poor condition and nothing was wrong with them. Can you please explain what exactly it is about these trees that led Mr. Lenson, the town forester, to make this decision? As a country, we're going to have a new, we're going to have new national leadership when it comes to the environment. This is an opportunity as a township to take the lead on a local level to be progressive and lead the way. One of the first steps in doing this is protect, is protecting what we already have. Climate change is also a huge issue. Our moderate air quality is harmful to people with respiratory problems. I'm one of the 88 students in a club at the high school that discusses political issues. One of the topics we discuss is climate change, an area that's very important to many of us. Part of our discussion is how to make change at a local level. By cutting down these mature trees that still benefit the town, we're contributing to the problem of climate change. In addition to this, trees add value to homes and help manage flooding and erosion. There are plenty of other towns who've been able to work around trees and save them while building curbs and sidewalks. So why can't we? It might be a little more work or a little more expensive right now, but I know that the cost in the long run will be tremendous if the town cuts down these trees. Trees that still serve a purpose. Thank you and have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Raimi.
And next we have Hannah Monk. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Hannah Monk. I live at Fort T and Hoover Avenue.
Hi, Hannah. Sorry, we keep missing each other.
Sorry. I just wanted to understand if there was an update regarding the ordinances regarding chickens. And again, I want to reiterate that there's no health concern regarding chickens. I know I sent many links discussing that. And I also, I believe I sent this link, but I'll just say what it said. Rent a coop, the, one of the places that sells and rents chickens has, has a frequently asked question section where they spell out the coops won't smell with proper care, that the hens aren't noisy. And I also wanted to point out that there are people around town who do raise chickens. And I feel like if they were concerning health issues, it would have been apparent, it would be apparent. And I just wanted to request that this ordinance be voted on and resolved favorably before the council changes in January, just to avoid prolonging the issue. Thank you. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you, Hannah.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Svenfider Murda, Murra, pardon, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, my name is Svenfider Murra. My address is 8 Messing Road and I'm a freshman from West Orange High School's Fight for Green Environmental Club. I'd like to speak out, not for the first time, about trees, specifically against another one of the township's short-sighted decisions, the destruction of six trees on Rollinson Street. Yesterday, I went to Rollinson Street to speak to the residents who are set to lose the trees in front of their properties. Another member of the environmental club and I walked down the street, noting each of the trees that had an X mark on its bark and checking the information on our phones to see which trees were getting cut down for which reasons. We walked by a large, beautiful, and completely healthy zacova tree that towered over the street and sidewalk. A tree like that provides a lot of shade to the street and neighboring houses, helping to combat rising summer temperatures and definitely does a lot to increase the property value of the residents living behind it. A mature tree like that also absorbs at least 48 pounds of carbon a year. And cumulatively, a street with several trees can easily absorb several hundred pounds. This tree had absolutely nothing wrong with it. And considering all of the value trees and this tree specifically provide, cutting it down is nothing less than short-sighted. Of course, this is not the only tree coming down. We saw several other trees as we walked down the road, including some that had been marked as being in poor condition. Now, we're not experts, but examining these trees ourselves, we could see little wrong with them. One of them appeared to be completely fine, smallish and bereft of leaves like all the trees are now, but otherwise a perfectly healthy tree. The other appeared to have lost a branch recently, but similarly did not seem to be beyond saving as it sounded like it should have been based on the fact that the town was perfectly happy getting rid of it. These trees, even if they're not as impressive as, for instance, the zacova I mentioned earlier, still provide value to our planet and community, and we need to do everything we can to preserve them. Talking with the residents of Rollinson, I saw the sentiment agreed with. Yes, they care about improving the sidewalk, but they also care about their trees and want to protect them. West Orange needs to stop thinking in the short term and start thinking in the long term. If we keep cutting down trees for convenience or to save money, now we will pay for it later. Or probably more accurately, kids like me, like your kids or grandkids, will be paying for it later. Please slow down with this project and show us that saving our trees and our futures is a priority. These trees do not These trees do not need to come down. We can reach a compromise and keep our sidewalks manageable without sacrificing our cannibes, our property values, and the present and future health of us and our environments. Oh, and by the way, I was not going to say anything about this because I did not see any new information in the letter that was sent out this afternoon from the county engineer, Leonard Lapore. But we can see where you're trying to defend yourself and your short-sighted decisions. And at least among us youth, you are failing. We already know what is really important. We are already used to you, the majority of the elder generation, ignoring what is important and we are ready to keep coming here until you start paying attention. Thank you.
Why, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
And next, we have Katie Schaub. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Catherine or Katie Schaub and I live at 59 Rollinson Street. The hot topic. Like so many others, I am concerned about the tree removal set to happen on Rollinson in the next week. I grew up in West Orange and recently moved back in March after a decade away. I bought my home after several months of house hunting. And while there are many things that led me to fall in love with my new home, one of them was the beautiful tree right out front. I have four specific concerns I'd like to address. My first is that when I was initially approached about the tree in front of my property a few weeks ago, I was given misleading and possibly even untrue information, leaving me feeling like the meeting was not to ascertain my opinion on the tree, but rather to try and convince me to remove it. First, I was told my tree is in poor health, which I immediately dismissed as untrue. To add some context, my family actually owns a tree farm in Sussex County. And while we aren't certified arborists like Mr. Linson, we do work closely with the forester to manage for native species on our property and are generally pretty knowledgeable about trees. Before I closed on my home in March, we assessed the health of this tree and did not find any evidence of it being in poor health, aside from needing a trim. I was then told that some people find trees to be a nuisance because of the branches and leaves that fall into the sidewalk and street. Although all I said at the time was that I didn't find my tree to be a nuisance, I would like to note now that during the tropical storm this summer that took down several large trees and branches around town, this tree lost none of its branches, whereas other trees on our property did. After this, a different member of the crew mentioned they'd need to move the sidewalk closer to the wall in front of our home to accommodate the tree. While I'm sure this was just to confirm I'd be okay with it, at the time it left a bad taste in my mouth and felt like a final attempt to convince me to cut down the tree after the other two lines of reasoning had not worked. I do realize that this and the other trees that line Rollinson are owned by the town and could very well be cut down at any time without our consent. I greatly appreciate that the town makes an effort to speak with homeowners directly about the trees in front of our homes and obtain our consent before removal. What I do not appreciate is that when I was visited for this very reason, I was left feeling like I was being coerced into removing the tree, possibly with misleading or untrue information. I would like to thank Mr. Linson and Director Lapore for taking my wishes into consideration and not removing my tree. I just wish the visit I received didn't leave me with concerns about the six trees that are being removed. My second concern is that our town arborist and engineer could be doing more to save existing healthy trees around town and that this is an ongoing pattern. There was a news story published in 2016 about concerns residents on Hazel Ave had about removal of trees on their road. Just last year, residents of Barbara Avenue successfully organized to save several trees set for removal on their street and were also apparently told potentially misleading information about their trees and why they need to be removed. One of the reasons I ended up purchasing my home on Rollinson despite it being such a high-traffic road was how many trees line the street giving a charm. I hate to think that West Orange is making decisions about its trees that hurt property values and leave us at a disadvantage when compared to surrounding towns that do maintain their healthy old-growth trees. My third concern is that the unhealthy trees that absolutely do have to be removed are replaced with healthy, hardy species that are planted appropriately for long-term health. My fourth and final concern is the short amount of notice provided to residents about this action. I received notice on Thursday, the 19th, that these trees would be removed in the next week or two, which meant the first date of removal could have been as soon as three to four days after the notice date and that it was served the week before Thanksgiving. In the future, I ask that more advanced notice be given, especially if near a federal holiday. I am meeting with Director Lapore tomorrow to review the trees set for removal and have had a productive conversation with him earlier in the week. While I look forward to working with him on this, I am concerned with how I was initially approached about this matter and my tree and that two possibly perfectly healthy trees out of the six are still set for removal on our street. Thank you so much for your time and consideration in this matter. I do hope that the town council works to prioritize protecting our town's healthy trees.
Thank you so much, Katie. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
And next, we have Lauren Svetvillas. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi there. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Lauren.
Hello, good evening. Lauren Svetvillas. And I'm on Prospect Avenue here in West Orange. In case I forget to mention before I end my comments, I want to wish each of you a healthy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. Even those township council members with which I completely disagree with, I wish you a relaxing holiday. I was very pleasant to hear Laura speak about the seniors. And it's, I mean, what a great job. So thank you. Best, best hire in West Orange. I'm appreciative of that. I'm very thankful for that. I'm also thankful for the time and energy Mr. Kokoviac spent on this town council and thankful that despite being the lone voice of transparency and accountability for years, and he was skewered, I think people can acknowledge that, right? He's skewered more times than I can count. He licked his wounds and kept advocating for checks and balances. So thank you, Mr. Kokoviac. I'm also thankful that although I agitate Councilman Guarino sometimes with my comments, that he still offers me a smile and we can talk about sidewalks and trees like Churadell. So thank you. I wish them both success on their next adventures outside their elected roles. I'm also very thankful for all these green voices I'm hearing. From my experience speaking in favor of the environment in front of this council, the zoning board, and the planning board, I recommend keeping on it. We had a relative blue wave this November and I'm very excited to see this new growing green wave here locally. So keep at it. You've got our support. Our Green West Orange is behind you 110%. On a separate, different note, something I wasn't going to speak about, but after hearing Councilman Guarino's passionate pleas to shop downtown, I felt compelled to add this thought. I too prefer shopping locally and I used to spend time advocating for doing so and shouting from the rooftops against practices by such stores as Walmart, who really come in and kill downtowns, a company that I have long referred to as Mall Ward instead. But here's the issue. This majority town council continually works to pass resolutions that really work against our downtown and the ability for residents to afford not just to live in West Orange, but for us to shop here. Moving the library, giving tax breaks to developers at the expense of residents, cutting down trees, like you've been hearing, that destroy the beauty and safety of our streets, even siding with developers who don't want to build sidewalks for us residents because they feel it'll be too expensive. So again, with the planning board's unanimous decision to attempt again to designate Essex Executive Drive as blighted, a designation that Councilwoman McCartney voted for with with passion, not just once but twice, as well as Essex Green, the library, more. What I'd like to see going forward, I would appreciate if this town council truly does support the health of Main Street and all of our downtown, uptown, crosstown merchants, then stop choosing wealthy developers over the struggling residents and businesses. Yes, advocate for shopping downtown. Yes, let's buy gift cards. Yes, let's spend our money here in town, but let's make it possible to do so. Stop giving Clarion, Millennium, BNE, and the mayor's campaign funders West Orange taxpayer gift cards. Thank you very much. Have a safe and a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Joyce. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue in West Orange. Good evening, council members. Just today, President-elect Biden appointed former Senator John Kerry as his environmental special envoy, underscoring a commitment to address climate change as an urgent issue. He will be asking for cooperation of the international community and every governor and every mayor. What is West Orange doing to reflect this priority? Every action, every purchase should include discussion of its effect on the environment. We should be leaders, not followers. Tonight, you are dealing with a number of issues on your agenda I'd like to address. The turf field, emergency vehicle replacements, and the tree ordinance. First, the turf field. Tonight, you will be voting to authorize $261,000 to install a new artificial turf field in Degman Park. Artificial turfs are expensive, hot, they off-gas, need to be replaced every few years, cause tons of garbage, cause 45% more injuries to the players, and most importantly, are highly toxic and associated with increased cancer rates. Why not use real grass with drought-resistant grasses and keep groundwater safe? Secondly, tonight you will be voting on ambulance and truck replacements, spending $232,000, which I realize you obtained by a settlement after a tragic accident. Are these replacement vehicles fuel-efficient? The city of Seattle has achieved 23% increase in miles driven and 19% reduction in carbon dioxide emissions by using hybrid ambulance vehicles. Number three, the tree ordinance. I greatly appreciate that you removed the 15-foot feet definition for a tree, but I still have great concerns about the fact that the township is still allowing an exemption for golf courses. As you know, the Montclair Golf Course just raised hundreds of trees and it looks horrible if you drive by on Prospect Avenue. As well as I am concerned about permitting three living trees per year to be removed by homeowners. Other townships allow three trees in five years, not each year. I am also disheartened to see that a township is still aggressively removing old town trees which took hundreds of years to grow in order to create neat curbs instead of finding creative ways to repair sidewalks while maintaining our township's greatest assets. When you make decisions on these matters tonight and at all council meetings, are you taking into consideration the environmental impact of your decisions? It would be nice to know that West Orange has developed a strategy to do its part in climate change. Wouldn't it be nice to be amongst the first towns to be prepared when Mr. Kerry reaches out? Thank you and good evening. Happy holiday to all.
Thank you, Ms. Rudin.
Hey, thank you.
Do you have anybody else?
Yes, Clara Silvestri, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Claire.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, Clara Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but after listening to the chorus of young people and others who spoke about the trees, I just wanted to say that I'm one of the elder generation who does care deeply about the trees in West Orange. And I was very disconcerted to hear about the Rollinson resident and how she was treated by the township officials. And unfortunately, she's not the first resident whom I've heard this kind of, I don't want to use the word coercion, but strong persuasion by the forester or the township engineer to take down healthy trees that are in the path of new curbs. I recall specifically several years ago, residents on Winding Way who complained that they were being strong-armed to take down healthy, mature trees. And in my neighborhood alone, one of the first streets where the trees were taken down wholesale to put in new curbs was Cobain Terrace. And there was a removal of at least five or six trees along, healthy trees along the tree lawn that were replaced by what I called lollipop trees, small trees, that now, six, seven years later, four of them have been removed and two others are half, are half-dead. So the whole complexion of that street has changed. I've seen the complexion of a number of streets in my Gregory neighborhood totally changed by this wholesale removal of healthy trees. So I would strongly recommend that the council look to put something in the tree ordinance. The tree ordinance is on the agenda for second reading to look at putting in place a policy where these trees will be protected. As another speaker mentioned tonight, these trees take decades. When you take one down, even if you replace the tree, it takes decades to create any kind of shade. And you can go to Cobain Terrace and see the few healthy trees that were replacement trees, even seven, eight years later, give barely any shade. So the other thing I wanted to mention has to do with the planning board hearings last week. And I want to echo my disappointment with the way the proceedings went, where the two witnesses were not allowed to be cross-examined by the public. Ms. Gruel, whom the taxpayers paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 to produce the report recommending the property receive redevelopment designation, had very few questions posed to her by members of the planning board. And there were plenty of things that needed follow-up. And yet, when it was time for the public to cross-examine, the planning board chairman decided not to exercise his ability to not make the public, make Ms. Gruel available to the public. And so I'd ask that when this resolution comes before the town council, that the council ensures that Ms. Gruel is available for questioning by not only the council, but the public. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Sally Malanga, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road. I'd like to thank the town council for the updates on all the volunteer activities. It was very, very heartwarming. I also want to mention that I do agree with Michaela and Lauren that the votes on the planning board that denied the public the right to ask questions at the last planning board meeting was abhorrent and will probably come back to bite us. I also support Joyce in her objections to the toxic plastic grass at Degnan Park. I think that should be put on hold by this council. It just sounds like a permanent problem that's only going to cause toxicity and health problems down the road. And yes, again, we do require a better tree ordinance. But specifically, I want to add to what the other members of the public who are deeply concerned about and what our Green West Orange members feel is the mismanagement of our tree cannibie. We are again asking you to take action to stop the taking down of healthy street trees. Stop putting residents on the spot about this and stop allowing wrong decisions to be made about our community trees. Instead, I recommend a new approach, a philosophy of town-wide valuing of trees and a bona fide tree beautification plan for our township. Our street trees, as the students mentioned, are living beings. They breathe. They have a heartbeat. They are historic members of the town. Yet often the DPW acts as though they can replace healthy street trees with Belgian block, cement, and call it a day. Trees are not replaceable like you replace a car. For every major tree cut, the benefits of the shade, the traffic calming, the habitat, the peace, the property value is lost for a generation. Now, town engineer Len Lapore tells this body that he attempts to minimize the tree losses. Now, town engineer Len Lapore tells this body that he attempts to minimize the tree losses. But to the residents regarding trees, he is a whole different man. Please, when you drive around the town, be aware yourselves. Every street that has been repaved has lost canopy. If you listen to the reports by numerous residents, especially the one by Catherine Shabe tonight, forester John Linton, along with our engineer Len Lapore and the DPW employees have been reported, even before we heard what we heard tonight, to behave in an aggressive way in attempts to convince West Orange residents that their community street trees should be demolished. Right at their front doors. This needs to be stopped. But I do suggest a solution, a shade tree commission. Without a shade tree commission, elected officials allow residents to fend for themselves. That is wrong. Another example, residents who live on Longview Street told our Green West Orange that they barely had time to react due to a surprise short notice by the Department of Public Works, and many trees were taken down. Imagine the psychological damage that caused, the helplessness. Then there's the lack of a consistent replanting and maintenance of trees. It's just not a priority. It's not planned. We need a street beautification policy and a set number of native trees to be planted each year with a commitment to maintenance. We need a forester whose mission is to beautify our township. Our current forester does not make it his mission. For the money we pay, we can and should have a strong tree preservation philosophy and a beautification plan. This year, it might be $70,000 for our forester for two days a week to err on the side of taking trees down, a lack of enforcement, plus our forester gets mileage fees which were not in his contract. That money can be better spent with a real plan. I'm especially calling out Susan McCartney as liaison to the Environmental Commission. You are especially needed in this matter. At the last meeting, you mentioned 500 trees, mere seedlings that were planted at the rock. They have all died due to the lack of water. So only the town council can authorize these three things.
Ms. Malanga, yeah, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Can I finish my sentence?
Very quickly.
A new, more amenable forester is needed, a shade tree commission and a beautification plan that will protect our canopy and our property values while putting residents' minds at ease.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, it's just listed under West Orange Town Council Meeting. Can I have to bring this over as a panelist? So I'll bring it over and then I'll turn your video off.
Rosemary Morelli.
Okay, and if you can give us your name and address for the record.
Is that me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, it's Rosemary Morelli. I don't know why my screen doesn't have a hand on the bottom.
No, it did. You did. I brought you over as a panelist because you have an older version of Zoom.
Oh, well, everything about me is old, even my version of Zoom, I guess. Anyway, I'd like to talk about, did I give you my name and address, Rosemary Morelli?
Yes.
I was at that planning board the other night and I was not surprised at all by the decision. In fact, I should not even have bothered because I knew what was going to turn out. Anybody who thought it was going to be any different isn't living in the real world in this township because that's how these boards are run. The various boards that we have in West Orange have been there for ages or members of these boards have been appointed. They're there for ages. They're really aging in place, which is not what we're looking for when it comes to aging in place in West Orange. My opinion, the only way we can remedy this problem is to have term limits from the mayor down to every member of the board. This just can't go on. Things will never change. We don't even have to go to the meetings. As I said, I didn't have to attend that meeting because I knew, it's like reading the last page of a novel. You know how it's going to end. And when that happens, it's not a democracy anymore, not in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morelli.
Okay, and I'm going to move you back over, so just don't touch your screen. At this time, if we have anyone else before I get to Mr. Paglisi, who would like to speak, just to raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none, Mr. Paglisi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, this is Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to send in flyers for our upcoming programs. But everything I talk about tonight will be on the county website, which is www.sixcountynj.org. So today as part of our ongoing food distribution program, we distributed 2,700 turkeys at Branchburg Park. And then we'll pick up with our regular food distributions again next week on Thursday, December 3. And we're going to be at St. Matthew AME Church in Orange, which is right next to Monte Urban Orange Park. That starts at 9:00 a.m. We've expanded our testing sites. We're testing six days a week. And each site has the capacity for 500 tests to be given. Residents do need an appointment to go to those testing sites. They can go to www.sixcovid.org. All our sites are free for Essex County residents. We don't ask for any insurance. You just have to reside in Essex County. And also on our website, I just want to bring up a program that's available to homeowners who have a mortgage. We have a more, an emergency mortgage assistance program that residents can apply for. That program is still open. It is on a first-come, first-served basis. So I encourage people who have been financially affected by the pandemic, if they are behind in their monthly mortgage payments, to take a look at that and see if it could, would be helpful to them. Like I said before, all this is on our website, which is www.sixcountynj.org. And I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and the upcoming holiday season as well.
Thank you, Anthony, so much. And thank you, last week, I believe, it was, what was the number, 1,500?
1,500, yes.
1,500 in West Orange that you you served and, you know, give our thanks to the county executive and the Board of Freeholders for us.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, and that is all.
Great. Thank you. And thank everyone for coming out to speak. We appreciate it. I am going to ask at this time for Mr. Lapore to address what occurred on Rollinson Street. And maybe you could give us a rundown there. I know a letter went out that you shared with the council early, late this afternoon. I am a little upset about the, you know, the one conversation that we heard from one of the residents. I know these conversations could be sensitive. But yet, you know, Mr. Lapore, I'm looking, we're looking for some resolution tonight because this isn't the, isn't the first time we've had residents come before us. So if you would like to fill us and the public in, that would be great.
Sure. Good evening, council members, and as well as good evening, members of the public. Some of the statements that have been said tonight are just very quite accurate. There were six trees proposed to be removed on Rollinson Street. Two of those trees are ash trees. Two of them are maple trees that are in poor condition. And then another is a zelkova which has been described, and the sixth is a linden. The latter two, we did meet with residents of those two homes. Those two residents are in agreement that we can remove the trees. However, since there seems to be a concern of coercion on the part of either me or the forester or other members of Public Works, I will go back and talk to those two residents about the trees. As far as the other two, the ash trees, or two of the other four are ash trees. We are losing those trees throughout the town. At this point, we want to remove those trees and start new by planting trees to replace them and not having to make these improvements around them, only at a later date to have to remove the tree and perhaps affect the curb and sidewalk that get installed.
Excuse me, Mr. Lapore, I just want to turn for one second. So those on our list, that was the first two on the list, so they will be replaced?
Yes, well, these aren't the only trees that would be replaced.
Okay.
There'll be other replacements. There'll be other plantings on the street. But those two would would be replaced, as would the other two maple trees. Those are again, four of the trees, and I think Mr. Linton is available if he wants to talk a little bit more about them and their condition. But what we want to do is is not have to go back in just a couple of years and take those trees out. We're making an improvement that's going to be for decades here. We want to put trees that are also going to last decades on the street.
And what, when would the trees be replaced?
They would not be replaced till springtime.
And how many? So if you're removing six, are you replacing all six?
We would replace all six, provided the residents are satisfied with the choices that they would have for a tree in front of their home. But those aren't the only locations. I think John Linton has also spotted a number of locations where he would like to place trees on the street, not just on this one side, but but on other sides also.
And would you need the homeowner's permission to plant those trees?
We don't need the homeowner's permission, but we'd like to get their approval of what we're planting because we need them to provide some of the minimal amount of maintenance, which is simply some watering for the first several months or year of the tree's life.
Okay. To, okay, so Mr. Linton, you're on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hi, how are you?
Okay.
Okay, so can you talk to the conditions of the ash trees?
Right now, the two ash trees are are healthy. They have not been affected with Emerald Ash for. But we've, we've had a great infestation over the last, the last year, really. It's been picking up and, you know, most, most people, you know, unless you're inoculating the trees to prevent the infestation of Emerald Ash for, the trees are going to be, going to be lost. And the, the inoculation is good for two years. It's expensive, but it is effective. But, you know, most, most municipalities are just inoculating a few specimen trees. And West Orange is not, we haven't, we haven't inoculated any at this point.
What's the process for inoculation and the expense?
The expense is about, about $200 a tree. Those are smaller trees. Maybe it would be 100, you know, a piece every other year. And it's basically something that primarily is done in the spring. And it's, it's actually, you know, there are several insertions are made around the base of the trunk and low-pressure chemical is pumped in there. It only takes about, about 20 minutes or so to inject the tree and then it's good for, good for two years.
So this tree, these two trees have not, so they're not, they have not been infested?
Correct. Yeah, they're not infested at this time. I mean, they are.
So why would you recommend them being taken down?
Just for the, the cost and the, the expense. You know, I mean, if we did every ash tree in town, it would, it would be expensive. You know, it's, it is a possibility to inject these trees.
Okay, and if you did the, if you did the injections, that's cheaper than taking down the tree and replacing it?
No, it's actually more cost-effective over time. But we figure that it's gonna, gonna take, you have to inject over the next 20 years. So, so roughly $1,000 per tree over the next.
Over 20 years?
Over 20 years, yeah. Ever, yeah.
Okay, and then the other two maple trees, it says poor condition. Can you define poor condition?
One of the things about maple trees is they have a propensity to develop girdling roots, roots that actually grow in a concentric figure around the trees. And since we're asking a tree to grow in an unnatural location, these roots, you know, they, they're, the sidewalk acts as a root barrier, the curb acts as a root barrier. So the trees, frequently the root system grows around the trunk of the tree and gradually strangles the tree over time. So these trees, they're root-bound, basically. You know, in a, in a, in a natural environment, you know, maple trees can live to be 75, 125 years. In a root suburban location, if we get 60 years out of them, we're doing pretty well. The one thing about preserving trees, you know, the best thing you can do to preserve a tree is stay away from it. And one of the options is to leave the old curbing in and to basically plank the sidewalk up over the roots without cutting them. Because if you, if you cut roots, particularly on a mature tree, they, they, you know, it, it's not a good thing. And it, you know, over, over a short period of time, just a year or two, cutting the roots can can kill the trees. And if it's, if it's excessive, they actually become unstable and could uproot in a storm situation. So we usually, we usually, you know, we, when we, when we talk to a resident, we, we tell them, look, if you, if you want to keep the tree, we've got to have to leave the old curb in. Everybody else is going to get a new curb. And we have to route the sidewalk around the trees. And if they're healthy, we can do that. And we usually, we interact with each individual homeowner. And, and we take the time to discuss the various options. And sometimes the trees are so bad that it's, it's very obvious that they have to come down, that they're, they're not going to make it. They're not going to, even with minor root loss with curb and sidewalk, they're just nearing the end of their lifespan. And one of the first things they teach you in forestry school is that trees are a renewable natural resource. You remove a tree, you plant a tree. And over time, as we, we do replace trees throughout the town, you know, we, we, we end up with, you know, a varied ages of trees and species of trees. And that's, that gives us the best option against insect or disease problems. If you plant, you know, entire street with the same species, it's very subject to insect or disease infestation. And, you know, we have a constant influx of, of new diseases and insects being brought into this country. So we've.
Okay, but these two trees right now, I appreciate that of all what could happen. But with these two maple trees, where are they at on your scale, 1 to 10 on poor condition?
If we did absolutely nothing, you know, they, they could have another five, five years of life, maybe 10 years of life. But with, with the road reconstruction, they, they don't have much, much of a chance.
And where are the homeowners, Mr. Lapore, with these two trees?
These, these two trees, as well as the two ashes, were scheduled to be removed or listed to be removed without anything to do with this, with this street work itself. So these homeowners, other than. So these homeowners, other than being notified that their, their trees are being removed, do not approach them and specifically, do they want to save the tree or not? It's just our experience, we're losing ash trees throughout the town, let's take these ash trees down. Let's replace them with trees that are going to be there for 50 or 60 years. And the same is is true with the maple trees. Again, they're not subject to the infestation that the ash trees are, but they just not in good condition.
Well, not good condition, but it doesn't sound like terrible condition. Are they worth inoculating?
Well, we wouldn't inoculate the maple trees. And we have not inoculated, and John, you can correct me, I don't know if we've inoculated any ash tree, or maybe we did one.
There's, there's one I recommended to be inoculated up at the, at Rock Spring Golf Club. But we, we haven't done that as of yet.
Okay, I'm going to not, I just want to see if my colleagues have any questions for you. I'm inoculated. I apologize to them most of the time here. Councilman Guarino, any questions on this?
Yes, thank you, Council President, to Mr. Laporte and Mr. Lindstrom, thank you for being here tonight. My question is, what is the what is the cost of inoculating a tree?
It, it runs, you know, those are smaller ash trees, I'm thinking 100, 125 apiece or so. Most, most ash trees are around 200 apiece, the larger ones. It's, it's by the diameter inch. And it seems to me, it's about $8 per diameter inch.
Okay, what's the cost of planting a new tree?
The, the last prices we've been getting is $384 for a two-inch caliber tree with a two, two-year guarantee.
With a two-year guarantee. Okay, so basically, for up to $200, you can inoculate an ash tree. And what are the potentials? What, what is the documentation that shows the success rate of inoculation? How much more could a tree get? How many more years could a tree get with inoculation?
It can live out its natural lifespan, so I would say, you know, we could, we could get another 40, 50 years out of these trees.
Okay, so would be cost effective to inoculate him versus planting new?
It's, it's hard to say, you know, I, 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 I don't think, I really don't think so. You know, I, I think that we would, we would be better off planting a different species. Basically, the, the ash as a species is kind of going the way of the dodo. It's just not, it's no longer a viable species for New Jersey, so the only way you can maintain them is to keep keep injecting them. So it's, it's, it's they, they're saying, you know, inject them for about 20 years and then maybe they, we'll have some natural control. That will allow us to have ash trees again. It just, just takes, takes time to, for science to catch up. You know, and there, there's, there's ash trees in China where, where they originated from, but there's natural predators that that's just, you know, keep the, the population at a reasonable level.
Okay, and do we have documentation with neighboring townships that have experience with their ash trees?
I can tell you that the, the city of Summit is inoculating about 30 trees on Springfield Avenue. Because they're right in the downtown area, and when they redeveloped Springfield Avenue about 15 years ago, they planted 30 ash trees. So they're, they're being taken care of. I don't, I don't know. I, 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 we could, we could check with Tom Doty in in Milburn, but I'm doubtful that they're doing anything. I don't think Livingston's doing anything with ash trees. I see a lot of dead ash trees in Livingston. So possibly, I, I would think Glen Ridge might be doing some.
See, my, my concern, and I appreciate your, my, here, here's my concern, the thing about, you know, we want to save our canopy, want to save our trees. Some residents are not as well informed or care as much as our youths do and the youths do and of the Green West Orange. And I'm just trying to get an idea that if it costs so much for a new tree and the chances of that surviving, and believe me, I've been there. But I'm saying is, if what can do, could we test, you know, doing further inoculations and see how far we get, even if we get 15, 20 more years of, out of a current ash tree, that's 15 or 20 more years of, you know, environmental and ecology and and the canopy. And I'm just trying to get an idea. And to you, Mr. Laporte, you know, when we do the new, the new street developments and everything else, can we just say, fine, let's not put in new sidewalks? If people want to keep the trees, and if we want to keep the trees, don't give residents new sidewalks, just do the pavement. Do the milling and grinding, don't worry about the curbs and leave the trees and then see what we can do. I'm, I'm just being devil's advocate, I'm just asking these questions because people are coming and they're saying, well, you're, you know, inhibiting the residents, and then we're hearing, you know, you're telling us we're not, and the residents, some residents want the trees gone. Well, we need to have a little bit more of a plan saying, okay, we want to keep the trees, don't put the sidewalks in. Don't put the curbing in, which will save us money, and take the same amount of money, put it into inoculating the trees and seeing how far we go. Do a test period. See if you inoculate a tree, it, it survives and everything else, and then find. That's the way we go. I mean sidewalks, well, that's just a vanity thing. I mean, you know, they become the property, even though we put them in, they become the property and responsibility of the homeowner. But what I'm asking for and not, not being, you know, I'm saying is, but there's got to be an if that. So if we want to keep our trees, we should do a project, we should do a test project to find out what happens if we inoculate trees. If nothing works, if it doesn't work, then nobody can criticize you that you didn't take the effort. And if they do work, then that's a plus. So that's what I think, you know, you need to go in in that direction. And if not doing the sidewalks prevents a tree from being taken down, then so be it. The tree is going to survive and not fall down and kill somebody.
Excuse me, excuse me, Councilman, and I just, just because we're still in public comment, I mean, responding. And I appreciate all those comments, and I think we, what I like to do is ask, I'll let everybody else ask a few more questions. And then if we could, we get more into that when we get to the tree ordinance. And and moving forward, only because I have another speaker that we need, we need to get on after.
I didn't know, sorry, Council.
No, 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 I, I, I just, I just wanted to, to throw that in there. But then, do you have any other quick questions, Councilman?
No, I'll wait till later.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you so much. Councilman Kocoviac?
Thank you, Council President, I agree with you. You can see that what we're trying to achieve here is something much larger than public comment and response to public comment. I just wanted to ask one quick question. Which is, Mr. Laporte, is there any written policies or procedures written on how to deal with the, with trees here in West Orange? Any, any specific policy dealing with public trees? Although that's part of why we have a forester, is so that we do have u- uniform plans of of when we need to remove trees, when we should be replanting trees, when trees need to be trimmed or pruned. So there isn't a, a written policy, there is not.
Okay.
Well, we do have, I could interject something here. We do have a community forestry management plan, it's a five-year plan. And as part of that, in the appendix, we have policies pertaining to sidewalks, pertaining to sewer laterals. The reasons why we take a tree, it's got to be, why we would remove a tree, it's got to be dead disease, dying, structurally unsound in some way. So we do have, have written policies and, you know, they, we could be sharing, we could share those.
Yes, please.
Yes, please, whoever, whoever has those, please email it to the council, please. And that's all the question I want to ask, because I think that's a very good area for us to look into here, to give guidance to the administration, as we're supposed to do as a council, sort of more of a policymaking body. But, and just to remind you, I've already suggested that we need to take this out and deal with it in a totally separate matter. You know, maybe even different special meetings or, or set this up on a regular basis to look into all kinds of these areas. And I think we already have a shade tree commission on our, in our municipal code, so it wouldn't be that difficult to fire this up. That's all I wanted to say at this point, so we can move things along.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Metu Brown, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you to Councilman Korvick and Councilman Guarino for, for the points that they made. My question is, with respect to the ash trees, how old, well, both the ash and the maple trees, how old are they and what sizes are they?
Lenny, you have the, the page in front of you. I'm, I'm sitting in a U-Haul truck on Route 77 in Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Linson.
The two are, are 14 inches and 18 inches respectively. The one Norway maple is 21 inches. The other red maple is only seven, seven inches. And and that's again, diameter at rest height. I do not know their age. John may be able to give an idea of their age based on their size.
I, I would say the ash trees are about, about 20 years old and the, the maples are probably 45 years old. And that one narrow maple, it, it's, it's, it really, because it's in poor health, that's, it's probably the same age as the other maples, but it's just it's not, it's just been in survival mode.
Okay, thank you. And, and with respect to, I, I know that you're, you're in a U-Haul, so I don't want to keep you, and we do have to get to the public comment. Council President, are we going to be able to have another discussion with Mr. Linson? I'm curious to see, I know that he consults with other municipalities and townships, what their shade tree commissions do and how effective or helpful they are in, in those townships. I know this isn't the proper time for it, because we do have to finish with public comment, but I would like to second Councilman Korvick's suggestion again, with respect to a discussion, a further discussion on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and in respect for time, not this, this evening, obviously, because he's on his way out, and our amendments this evening do not include that, just for folks know, later in the program, we have a tree amendment to our tree ordinance on second and final reading. That does not mean the end of the discussion. So we will move forward in the, in the near future to continue making improvements and mending it. But we, there are certain certain pieces that we need to move forward on for protection. And but for, the, the next two meetings are going to be very jam-packed, so we're, we're looking in January to have these kind of discussions. Okay, Councilwoman, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, and just one last, to, to your point earlier, you mentioned that Mr. Laporte sent the council a letter. I, I, I just looked through my email. I must have missed it.
I apologize, it came from Ms. Benevento from his office. So if you look at her name, you'll see the letter that went out to all the residents on Rollason Street.
Okay, I'll look for it, thank you.
And, and each tree has the diameter width on it. You'll be able to get a lot of detail in this letter.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And Councilwoman McCartney, if you have any questions, real quick?
Okay, thank you, just real quick. I appreciate, Lynn, thank you for this letter. Goes, one of the comments that was made about the timing of this and how people are notified, is it a short notice? That was a concern that I had as well. You know, how, 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 how much of a timeframe do people have to respond? Almost like our survey, surveys that you send out. God bless you.
Thank you.
Surveys, how much, you know, how much time do people have?
Well, we, we went out approximately two and a half weeks ago to talk to as many of the residents as we could. So this letter that went out last week was just a follow-up on, on those where we, letting people know where we were removing trees, and that some of the trees were being removed not based on the road improvements, but based on the condition of the trees and what our future is with the future of those trees, particularly the ash trees.
So that, another point too, that a few years ago, John may remember, but a few years ago, we did do a campaign on the Emerald Ash Bore and talking about a tree policy and what residents could do. We can resurrect that and send out additional information on that along with the Community Forestry Management Plan, which it is a five-year plan, so we can send that information out. I think that would be important. When you said that this letter was sent out a few weeks ago, John just mentioned about the maple trees have habit of girdling the trees. When you approached these residents weeks ago, is, is it affecting their sidewalks now? Are they uprooting the sidewalks?
I, I'd have to go back and look at those. There are many trees that are affecting the sidewalks on these streets. Considering that this is used by Seton Hall Prep students, it's also used by students walking to Hazel School, probably also Roosevelt School. It, it's critical that, that these sidewalks be repaired.
Well, that was my question, it sounds like a safety issue is involved also?
Yeah, and, and just because we're not removing a tree, doesn't mean there isn't a sidewalk issue there. It's just that we are looking at, or we've come up with a way that we want to deal with the sidewalk and, and or curb and still maintain the tree.
I appreciate a Councilman Guarino trying to make that analysis between the expenses. But inoculating the tree seems that it would cost so much more. If we, if we did that, because it's not a one-time injection, it takes years of inoculation. I don't, I don't have any.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And Lynn, I appreciate that you're going to revisit the neighbor to talk.
Well, yes, I will be there tomorrow. And, and I'm going to reach out to to the property owners where the other six trees are located also tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, thank you, Mr. Laporte and Mr. Linson. We'll defer to you later on in the meeting. I just wanted to just address this issue, because it did come up today. We had many residents reach out to us and try to give them a better understanding as well. And we'll continue, I guess, a conversation with Mr., with you, Mr. Laporte, later in the evening. Just so, just so folks know, this is administrative decision, we could weigh in. But again, it's, it's an administrative decision in regards to the tree removal. With that being said, I'm just seeing if I need administration on any of the other public comments. Seeing that now, so Councilman Guarino, I'll go back to you to respond for the rest of the public comments.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Also, Joe Fagan, thank you, my history teacher, and thank you for your comments and updates, what's going on in town. You know, you've been a wealth of knowledge, explained a lot, and so thank you for being here. I'll continue watching you for a very, very, very long time. Anthony, Mr. Lucy, thank you. Thank you to the, for all the things you've done. Thank you for always being there for me. Especially when I needed help with my pedestrian safety advisory board. And also my sincere thanks to the county executive and the Board of Chosen Freeholders for always being there to support us with our traffic safety and anything that we needed, particularly, you know, with the Alyssa Drive intersection, with all our new intersection improvements. For the two awards that, that we're getting for our two new improved intersections, so we, we thank the county and the county executive and yourself and the board for continuing to support our, our initiatives. So thank you. And thank you for feeding our, our people. That's even more important. Moving on to the, to the people who spoke tonight, particularly about the trees, you know, I said it last council meeting, you know, I, I totally respect what you're doing. And you got to keep doing what you're saying, do your investigations, but you got to get more of, of your groups together. You got to get them involved and keep them involved. Because you can talk about it now, but the minute you stop talking about it and doing your work. Because you can talk about it now, but the minute you stop talking about it and doing your work, it's all going to fall apart. And also, for anyone anything you need, particularly for trees, trees are important. They they do do property values. They do add the air quality, and these are things that we need to protect. That's why I was asking my questions. If we can pay the money to save a tree, is it worth it? Those are the things we need to do. That's the information we should have always asked for because those are things that we we have to look into. So don't don't stop doing what you're doing, but hopefully I'll still keep doing what I'm doing and asking for the information that I need to make the decisions that I I need to make. Uh, I just want to go back to Ms. Bennett. Thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that. Thank you for your good wishes. And uh thank you for always being there when we need to find out something. And um, you know, I like to research exactly why our residents were not allowed to question, and hopefully I can hear the tape uh of the planning board meeting, um because I just want to hear the whole thing. So thank you. Um. What I want to talk about, you know, when you 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 talk, Ms. Rudin talked about turf fields. Um, first of all, you know, I don't know if you noticed, but I'm a certified FIFA soccer referee. So I know how turf fields operate. I know that the only thing you said that was true about a turf field is that they do get hot. I don't know if you've ever been on a turf field when it's ninety-five degrees off the field, and the minute you step on the field, it becomes a hundred and ten degrees uh on the soccer field. So that that is a problem, but there have been tests, particularly tests out in the West Coast that tested turf fields, and they found no major incidences of carcinogen and and cancerous induction with with the turf fields. When you fall on a turf field, you get more cushion than you fall on a grass field, and that's been verified. There is less injuries. If you look at the insurance reports, the injury rate has gone down with the onset of turf fields. Now, fifteen, twenty years ago, when turf fields are first occurring out, before they made Duraterf, yes, there were problems. There were toxic problems with the turf. They were not done right, the ground waters, everything else. But the turf fields that we have here in West Orange are Duraterf, and they do not have the high toxicity that previous turf fields have. They do save us money. They last fifteen years, but in those fifteen years, you don't have to cut them. You don't have to water them. The maintenance on a turf field is a lot less than a grass field. So that's the one thing I'll disagree with you because basically they are a benefit, and it helps our students play safely. They get long wear out on them, and you don't have to wait for the ground crews to taint and mow the grass. So those there 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 are are benefits. Um, let me see, let me go through my notes. The the emergency ambulance is, you know, Joyce, I agree with you. I mean, when we buy you know, cars for the state, we look for hybrid cars, but you know, when you look for West Orange, we are a mountainous community. We have high hills and low hills, so we need to do our research, what kind of hybrid vehicles would best suit would still do the performance that we do and at the same time, you know, be environmentally friendly. So those are those are things that we need to do. And I'm sure our our purchasing department, our purchasing agent, Mrs. Dennis, did her homework and to see, you know, were there vehicles that would actually perform, you know, to our fire department and EMT standards with within the within those uh guidelines. So but those are things we still need to look for, and I'm sure eventually the vehicles will be there um to um to do that. Um, then going back to about, you know, um with with, you know, Essex Green, you know, complete streets and and because of complete streets I have to go to, we were able to get Clarion, who did not get a pilot. Let's go back there, and they are putting in sidewalks, and you could ask any member of our pedestrian safety board, particularly Sangita Bedlini, Roz Moskowitz, Mike Dama Miller, all the people, Lori Caffiner. Asked them when we met with the contractor and and the developer, and we sat, we walked six hours at Essex Green and met and went through the plans, and the blueprints are sitting right over here in my office, showed that the new sidewalks that they're putting in, the new traffic lights they're putting in, the safety monitors, the walkways, the lighting, everything. Those are the things that we've gotten in executive drive in Essex Green, and they will take place once the construction starts. I've heard a few people say as well, nothing happened. Well, nothing happened because then the construction has happened. Once that happens, all this gets pulled into place, and it all was because we have the leverage, and thanks to Councilwoman Susan McCartney for helping us get complete streets incorporated into the master plan. That's what guides us, and so I just have to to go back to that. So you'll see the things that will happen. The sidewalks that incorporate up from Marion Drive up into Essex Green, and when that all is started, there'll be a complete safe walkway to from the, you know, Route ten up Marion Drive into, so people can walk in there. Uh, what I'm trying to do before I leave, but not, but I hope one of my council colleagues or my council colleagues will push forward resolution to get the state to complete the sidewalks from, you know, Marion Drive down to Pleasant Valley Way to make the mall more pedestrian accessible. Um, but other than that, I mean, that's all I have to say. We have the trees. We have to look at the tree orange. We have to look at options at what we can do. When you look at pedestrian safety, you look at the things that we have done and what will occur once construction starts. But you have to pull things in. When you look at turf fields, you look at the benefit of what turf fields bring. There were issues twenty years ago. Now they're not. Injury rates. Look at the insurance reports. Look at what happens when the kids play on turf field compared to when they play on the grass field. And West Orange, for the longest time, had terrible grass grass fields, and anybody out in the audience remembers Mountain Top and playing travel soccer on um Conforty Field, you you can, well, when the parents used to go along, pick up the rocks and the glass and everything else. So um, Council President, thank you, and thank you for um letting me go on for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman uh Kocoviac.
Yes, thank you. We'll try to be brief because I know the evening is running long. I thought that there were some questions that perhaps the administration can answer. Uh, Ms. Monk asked about the status of the amendments to a couple of ordinances to make it okay to have uh raised chickens on uh on residential property, and I think she deserves a uh an answer. Uh, so I hope someone from the administration can talk about where this issue stands. She's been coming to the council for quite a while, and uh I think we need to uh respond to her. Um, I'm afraid, however, that uh this is something that's going to have to uh run into next year and start all over uh from whatever progress has been made now because we can't get into different uh uh meetings uh where we can have first and second reading on any sort of ordinance changes. So I'm I'm uh I apologize uh to Ms. Monk about that, but but we really need to get on this and provide a status if someone can do that uh tonight. Um, also, Ms. Rudin uh asked about uh whether the administration took a look at fuel-efficient ambulances. I think she deserves uh an answer to that and an explanation of uh of of that situation. The the two main issues tonight seem to be the trees, and I want to say thank you to everyone who's come out and talked about this because those of you who are coming to the meetings, council meetings on a regular basis, know this has been going on for some time where proponents of additional changes to uh uh the ordinance keep coming to the council meetings, keep speaking of public comment, keep making incredibly good and articulate arguments, and then we as a council basically do nothing. And I I think that needs to stop. I suggested at the last council meeting that we pull this out and address it directly with in a way uh where we won't be interrupting the rest of the flow of the meeting. That might be uh having a series of of uh uh separate meetings like we've done a few times so far this year and bring together everyone who has uh these suggestions about how to improve the trees, because while I appreciate, and I think everyone is thankful that there are some uh improvements to the uh tree protection ordinance that are, I hope, are going to be approved tonight. It is really just a start. My understanding from our green West Orange is that they have been discussing these uh improvements, a variety of other improvements that didn't make it to the ordinance for literally years. And yet, even tonight, uh the council as a whole, the five people on the council, have not been apprised of all of these other suggestions in a in a structured way so that we could consider them, and I think that's what we need to do. Uh, particularly when we talk about all kinds of issues that we have with um uh the issues of policy and procedures for for taking down street trees. Uh, just having a plan and a policy uh and procedures uh in place so that we don't have to keep doing this at public comment uh every day and I uh uh every meeting. And I hope that we will take some time during the uh matters pending section to decide on a on a way forward uh for that, that the trees are just are just way too important, and uh the five people on the council uh deserve to uh to serve the residents by considering them and also getting the administration to weigh in on those two uh with their two cents, just like we were doing tonight. I thought that was very helpful, although it's a it's a dragging on the meeting. So um, we've been talking about this for months, but we haven't done anything on it. We've got to move forward in a structured way so that we can consider this uh these issues. Um, and the last one was, the last issue, I think, was uh the planning board uh hearing on executive a drive and the potential for it to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. Uh, just to clarify so that everybody's clear, uh the expert that was hired to do the preliminary study or the investigative study uh under the law is charged with recommending what should be done, whether it should be uh an area need redevelopment or not, or to take no uh position. And the same way with the planning board. The planning board does not decide this. That decision for whether we move forward with uh the designation of an area in need of redevelopment is done by the governing body under the state law, and that's the town council. So this has not been decided yet. Uh, but it it obviously will be. But I join the other people who were speaking tonight about how horrified I was at that planning board meeting to hear that the author of the report was not going to be questioned. You you talk about cross-examination. That seems a little bit fancy for just asking questions about the report. And those of you who have been on the council before know that this very argument has gone on multiple times before the town council. But I just want to say that this intentional refusal to provide transparency on an issue as important as this goes to the heart of our government. It is pernicious, and it's so cynicism, and it causes people to doubt the integrity of their government officials, especially their elected officials, from the very people that our government is supposed to be serving. And there is no reason to not allow questioning in a situation like this. It's a major town issue, and hiding from the public uh the the study or the author is nothing less than I don't know what the word is, a disgrace. I'm not sure what what the proper word. But but to do this, to hide from the public that you're supposed to be serving for the sole person purpose of trying to gain legal or tactical advantage is wrong because the government is supposed to be serving residents and listening to them and deciding what's in the best interest of of the town and getting their input. There should be no problem with us hearing from people we're supposed to be serving, whether we agree with them or not, whether we're proponents of the plan uh like the mayor is, but whether we're not. It's our government, and we need to, we need to behave the way a government is supposed to be behaving. And if you're a government official who's afraid of transparency and accountability, you should seriously consider resigning and going to do something else where you can have your power and have your authority, but you aren't uh required to be accountable to the people you're supposed to be representing. And I hope this issue does not come up before the town council. Those of you know that this is, this issue has come up multiple times before, and I don't want anybody who tries to say we should give less transparency to this issue uh at any point. Let's get the author here, and let's get the study there. Let's let everybody ask questions and let the chips fall where they may. This is back here, as Ms. Bennett was talking about, because the appellate court found that in the cross-examination of the previous area in need of redevelopment, the author of the study responded honestly to a question by a a resident, an objector. And it was that answer that was given honestly and directly as part of the process that the appellate court found to be uh wrong and sent it back. Uh, and that just means the truth won, and that's really what we're trying to do here. I understand there are proponents of this plan, and I'm sure everybody understands I'm an opponent of pilots. Uh, but let's let the process take its place. Let's and uh let's give people the government that they deserve. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Thank you, Council President, and um considering the time, I I will keep my comments very brief, uh particularly with respect to the the um everyone who came and spoke to the trees, since we will be addressing that a little bit later, I am going to reserve comment except to say thank you for um your voices, and please keep coming because things are not going to change unless you demand that change, and um I do look forward, and I will continue to say that I I I am hopeful that we can have a discussion about implementing and and or reactivating. I think uh Councilman Kocorvik said that there was a tree commission on our ordinances, um and it should be uh recommissioned if it has um been decommissioned. Um, I I think it's vital. I I I don't think it's okay to say that there is an expense that is too great to save the canopies in um our environment for today and tomorrow for your grandchildren and mine. Um, so I will reserve the rest of my comments for that time. Uh, Mr. Fagan, thank you for the history lessons as always and keeping us present um with all of the um events that are happening in town. Ms. Monk, I will tell you that I have spent a number of evenings and weekends doing my research, watching videos to my family's surprise on urban chicken coops, trying to learn as much as I can before we have the conversation as to how um, you know, we can move forward in amending, or if that is something that is of appetite to um the uh council members and the administration as a whole. There is a lot of complexity in there that I do not understand and don't feign to understand, so I am reading. Thank you for the links um and and looking forward to that conversation, certainly. Um, I I it was quite interesting um to to follow through on on those readings and the links that you shared. So thank you very much for your advocacy. Um, and just funny that you sent that email with respect to other people in town owning chickens. On our social media page, I found a picture of someone who had found a chicken um in one of our neighborhoods, um, which I thought was was funny. Um, certainly something to address, so thank you. Um, I think everyone else spoke to the trees. I I I do want to speak to um, and I and I won't say so too much about um my experience and as a spectator to the planning board because I did uh spend two evenings listening because I know this is going to come up before the council, so I won't take a position either way, simply so that I will not be excluded excluded from um a vote. However, I do share some of the sentiments that were shared tonight by um those who also objected to not being able to question um the professionals there. I I was quite disappointed, and I'll leave it at that. Um, Mr. Lapore and uh Mr. Lenson, thank you for coming out to speak on um the concerns of the residents, and and I certainly appreciate your willingness to go back and address those concerns of um of whether they were founded or unfounded. They were felt. whether they were founded or unfounded, they were felt by at least a resident. And and I think it's important for us to maintain those relationships with them and and inspire that continued dialogue and trust in the decisions that the township makes for our residents. And I think I will leave it at that. The Council President, thank you very much for the opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and nicely done. That was nice and quick and to the point. Councilwoman McCartney and Councilwoman McCartney, I know you are our planning board representative. I don't know if you could shed some light with us on the process and what occurred at the planning board meeting. If you could do that briefly for us, that would be very helpful and insightful.
I think it's more legal concern that was brought up. What I didn't appreciate the comment about hiring attorney just to preclude the public from speaking. What the council said was that cross examination was not required. I I can't cite the law that has that, but that
Excuse me, excuse me, Councilwoman. You said the council, you meant the planning board.
Planning board, right. That cross examining, cross examination was not required during this hearing and that it was at the discretion of the planning board chair to determine that. And as was just mentioned, this does come back before the council. People did speak. They did not cross examine the planner, but people did speak and most of the comments were about pilots. And that was not what the planning board was tasked to do. We were tapped, we were there to determine if the study that had been presented to us would qualify 10 Rooney, 100 Executive Drive and 200 as an area need of redevelopment. And that was unanimously determined. The other comment that was made also had to do with personnel matters, and that's not something I wanted to discuss. I also wanted to thank everyone for coming out about protecting the trees. And I appreciate Mr. Lepore sending out this letter this today, copying us on it because he I met with Mr. Lepore this afternoon on another issue at a residence with trees also. And the letter does state that there are 19 trees involved with this street work. 13 will be protected. I appreciate comments that were made because two are now still in discussion. And though the four that have been deemed in either poor condition or this emerald ash infestation that we're seeing all over town and in other municipalities, figure out how we deal with that. So I appreciate all the replacement issues that were raised as well and the comments from the residents and the fact that Mr. Lepore will go back to speak to the neighbor if you know, if feelings, if there was a feeling of being coerced. I do appreciate that. The question that was raised about the ambulance and the truck replacement, I had the same question on my agenda. I do know that the last fire engine that was purchased was energy efficient. And I'm hoping that we're moving in that direction. I did want to, oh, and Hannah Monk also. Interesting topic, very interesting. I do appreciate all of the supporting documentation that Hannah sent out to us. There are so many issues now that we discussed this with have been discussing this with other municipalities that we do need to hear from the administration, the health department, and also zoning officials on how could we or should we move forward with this? We can maybe have, you know, we're talking about having work sessions. I believe we have to have work sessions on topics. This topic, especially the trees and other issues, they can't even be addressed in impending matters. I do believe that we need a a working session to to have a really a good discussion and to actually resolve these issues that come up. I wanted to thank Joe Fagan for the information on the New Jersey American Water Assistance for residents and also the Public Service Alert message and his own message of hope and history. So I appreciate that, Joe. And to Anthony, too. Thank you again for the information on the Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program. At our last council meeting, you brought up the Small Business Emergency Program. And I know Councilman Greeno mentioned this before, but that was with the New Jersey Redevelopment Authority that was put out. And the first comment that was made was that when that grant or loan program came available, applications were gone in the first 24 minutes. So hopefully more information can come out so people can log on and find information there. And our Fight for Green, I I really have been involved with that for a long time. I I'm glad to hear that there are more and more students participating and getting involved in town. So, thank you. I I did receive an email. I did want to talk about, just to mention this about the creating a plan, management plan or sustainable plan, management plan. We, I have an offer from students at Stevens Institute and a resident in town that will work with the students to help the town develop such a plan. So something also that can be in our work session to discuss. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. And I wanted to thank Jerry Councilman Greeno for the information on the turf field. I know that that came up years ago and I appreciate that information.
Welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Hannah, my apologies, we've been trying to connect and between our schedules, we have not done so. I did not want to push you off. It's just that I've been trying to get more information from the Health Director. She had responded to us with a very thoughtful and courteous response to her feelings on the ordinance. We, we, the ordinance went into place quite a few years ago. The current ordinance, I believe, is on two acres and setbacks of 50 feet of property lines because there were issues with neighbors with coops on the property lines. And there were health concerns. I know there's new coops and the information that you've been sending us is very encouraging. I myself, you know, is reluctant to move forward without the consent of the health official. I know I've heard of of some folks having chickens in the township and unless they meet the requirements, they they're not supposed to have them on their property. But again, it's not something that we wouldn't not look at. But without the approval of our health officer, I I know I wouldn't feel comfortable. So but right now, it's, you know, we're, you know, with the pandemic and COVID-19. You know, she hasn't, you know, I have to get her on a call and spend a little bit more time. So hopefully with the new year, we'll we'll look to do that then. Right now, we're just making our, you know, making our way with the uptick in with with new cases. But we do appreciate the the information. And, you know, we always look to to review things and but without her consent of the Health Department, I I wouldn't I wouldn't recommend changing the ordinance at this time. To all our our callers from our high school students, as always, very impressive, very articulate, and so to the point. And, you know, we'll we'll belabor trees later. I just wanted Mr. Lepore, Mr. Linton to give a little insight on their perspective, whether you agree with them or not. And we'll continue to work forward. And there is policy in place and we'll and we'll get that out there and continue to work and do so because it's important. We're not going to just walk the wall, walk, we've got to walk the walk, not not just talk about it. And so there has been disappointments, and that's why tonight later on, we'll continue to work on the tree ordinance. But, you know, we couldn't attack all of it. So we're gonna do what we can now to make steady improvements. As far as the personnel issue that came up, that is a personnel issue. Ms. Bennett, thank you for your your kind words this evening as as well. And maybe on that situation, we have not been notified of of a situation. But I'll talk to legal and see if we could get an update, maybe at the next meeting to go into executive session. But there has not been anything brought to the council's attention in regards to the personnel situation that you have mentioned. That's an administration detail. And so unless it gets to a certain litigation, it doesn't come before us. But we will talk to administration about it. Executive Drive. So, oh, before I go there real quick, turf fields, we'll talk about the turf in a little bit. I I echo all of Councilman Greeno's points on turf. My kid, my, my, my children were athletes. Saved, you know, the injuries are very few and far between for many of the students, still is. These, these turf's fields are amazing. This one in particular, if you look at the, my colleagues, if you read down into the bid specs, there is a cooling material. So every year, you know, more and more more and more improvements are made on these turf fields. So they're very beneficial. And the cost savings across time, you know, it it's definitely beneficial in that regards. I know there would have been many high school. I feel bad. I did not get in touch with the high school softball team. They were advocating for these turf fields to get done. Just even rain delays, just so many conditions. They drain quickly. Especially now with COVID, our students can't go inside. And once the spring hits, once the spring hits, they're forced inside because the fields are wet from either the snow or the rain, especially in April and May, March, April, rather, when they're even getting ready to play. And we can't have all the students. So that's a problem that the school board is going to have this spring, especially because they're pushing all the winter sports back that will fall into the the spring. So the turf will definitely help and it's installed quickly to accommodate that problem as well. So again, just more and more benefits. So we could talk a little bit later about that. Executive Drive. So a couple of points were made and not to belabor them, but Essex Green is not in the redevelopment zone. 300 Executive Drive is not in the redevelopment zone. Full assessments will be taking place on those two properties. There's two pilots. Well, no, there's only one pilot in town, and that is Edison Lofts. And that property is, the revenue on that property has increased over time from when it was first got, had their CEO. So each year, the assessment increases on that property. So again, we'll look at redevelopment plan here, probably at the next meeting. I don't know exactly what occurred at the planning board. I thank Councilwoman McCartney for a discussion. We'll talk about it later if need be. But again, I go back to why we approved the the last plan, all the benefits. There's a lot of, you know, I spent months myself and Councilman Greeno out there talking to residents. We we talk about transparency. I want to talk about misinformation. Misinformation that is out there and confusion among the amongst the public of of what the benefits were on the last plan. And spent, you know, I would spend 20 minutes at a doorstop just trying to break things down. There's a very complicated plan it was regards, but so many multiple benefits. Taking title to 10 Rooney Circle, $7 million building with a $600,000 year tenant in rental rental income, rather, 600,000 year rental income. We would have received 1.5 million from the developer and renovations for a new library in that building. The the units being built were luxury units with 74 affordable housing and a half million dollar dog park. Plus, let's not, we have on the tax appeals tonight, tax appeals savings that we would have had a, you know, well, we're going to talk about that later on one of the resolutions. So plus the building, affordable, 65 affordable senior house, senior citizen units that would have been built at the current library. 7,500 square feet of community space at the current library, $1 million towards renovation at 10 Rooney, which would bring the assessed value up on that property that we would have titled to to $14 million at least and $3 million grant that the Library Board worked diligently to to get and to be awarded. And so you're looking at a 5.5 million dollars that the community would have to renovate the new space. So a great deal of benefit, not to mention the you know, just bringing new residents to that area and helping Essex Green with with their new project and bringing, you know, especially in times of COVID and and bringing new residents there. So, you know, a lot of benefits that we don't talk about and we have to do a better job at it, I guess. I think that's it as far as again, but you know, we all may have differences of opinion, but really do appreciate and folks for coming out. Katie, you know, you know, first time hearing you at the meeting and and coming back to buy property back in town. We thank you for that. And we hope to resolve the the tree issue later on. But again, I do appreciate everybody coming on this evening and you know, look forward to keep working towards trying to solve a lot of these issues here in the township. With that, I am going to turn it back to our clerk, Madam Clerk. So we could move forward with the resolutions very quickly because I want to bring on a speaker for Resolution 212-20. So
Okay. Consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, executive session, November 10, 2020.
Consent.
Consent.
Report of Township Officers, none, reading of petitions and communications and bids, none, bills. Are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
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 Resolutions, Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yeah, so we're, we're going to pull A because we're going to have a speaker on that. We're going, I have Mr. Lepore here to answer questions on all of the field projects. I don't need him pulled, but we will ask questions on that. I also have Mr. Gross to answer questions for us on Resolutions 2320 and 23420. So we'll have him discuss that at that time. And then we have Mr. Lepore here also, if he wants to discuss the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center project. And that's it. So right now, I'm just going to pull A. And Councilman Greeno, do you want any, we'll ask questions on all them, but any
No, I just had questions and Mr. Lepore, Mr. Gross will answer those questions.
Okay, great. Councilman Kocoviac, which ones would you like pulled?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to pull Resolution C 228-20. That's the resolution authorizing issuance of special emergency notes. Agenda item D, as in Delaware. Resolution 229-20, that's authorizing the execution of the interlocal services agreement. Item P, as in perfect, Resolution 241-20. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Yes, please. I'd like to have item I 234-20 pulled. That's the application to join the Bergen or I I know that there was a change in
Yeah.
I just didn't print it out. And the other ones were pulled. I do have questions on some other ones, but that's I want pulled, please.
Okay, great. And Councilwoman McCartney?
Nothing further to pull, but I do have questions also.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for that. So I would like to first thank him and bring him to the podium. We have Shale.
And we approve the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, rushing ahead.
That's okay.
Yes, we have a motion.
Yeah. Well, who for, who did the first motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, okay, thank you. And Susan did the second. All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Okay, great, thank you. So with that, I'd like to call our, our guest who patiently awaited. He's also a member of our community. So he, I'm sure he, he had a, a nice education on, uh, on the many topics this evening. And Shale Sokowski?
Ah, yes, um, Mr. Sokolowski, I'm going to be moving you over to a panelist. So you will be on camera. Don't do anything to your computer. You're going to see it change for a moment.
Mr. Hasawski is from, uh, Sokowski is from Hazla of Essex County. We had this on our resolution, uh, last, uh, meeting. We had many questions from, uh, from the council and he has been kind enough to come this evening to answer them for us. So tell us a little bit about his organization, how they operate and their benefit to our community.
Okay, Mr. Sokolowski, thank you. You are all set.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the introduction. I appreciate the opportunity to address the town council as well as the residents of West Orange. And I thought just to kind of ground everybody in the resolution that was brought at the prior meeting, I would just provide a brief overview of the history of the organization as well as its operations. So Hatzalah Essex County was started about 13 years ago, originally as a cell of Newark, and it really expanded into the county as demand for the services increased. That's all that is essence is really providing emergency medical services to those in need. And we do so at no cost. The organization is 24/7, 365. You know, we have our own dedicated dispatchers and our communication systems. And the organization is really comprised entirely of 100% volunteers. It's funded through community donations. We're not the beneficiary of any sort of government program. And, uh, you know, we're really pleased that, you know, both our leadership as well as our responders all live here in West Orange. We're proud to be your neighbors. You know, our responders are all EMTs. We carry the latest, you know, life-saving equipment. We have an ambulance, you know, that will be stationed at congregation A, A, B, J, and D, which is on Pleasant Valley Way. And last but certainly not least, I'm really proud that, you know, we've had some really fruitful and positive discussions, you know, both, both with the mayor as well as Chiefs Abbott and Vecchio and Mr. Trank about, you know, the organization and its operations. We're really looking forward to, you know, a longstanding and meaningful relationship with the town. And so in the interest of, of time and brevity, I know it's late. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
And, and, and Shale, if you could just explain to my colleagues, you and I obviously had a long conversation in regards to how, you know, someone is in need of your service, they call you directly, they do not call 911, correct?
Sure, that's right. So yeah, that's an important distinction. So this is independent from 911. It's a calling 911, you'll get, you know, the West Orange, you know, municipal services. Calling Hatzalah is, is not a 911 number. It's a, you know, it's a 10-digit phone number. So this is a private volunteer organization.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Just raise your hand.
Council President.
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you for that brief overview. You actually answered one of my questions that I had during the last meeting with respect to the funding in your overview. So thank you for that. Just if you can just clarify for the public, typically emergency service, what qualifies or constitutes an emergency service that they would not call 911 for?
Sure, it's a good question. So I think, I think what, what probably makes sense to have a point of distinction to say that, you know, the organization in, in any of the towns that it's operated in around the country has never been designed to somehow, you know, supplant the existing municipal services. And so, you know, I, as always, I think, you know, residents in the township, you know, should always feel free and feel completely comfortable and confident in calling 911, knowing that they'll, they'll receive excellent care. You know, this is, you know, another option. But again, you know, this, this isn't sort of like a, you know, an either or type of situation. It's just an, an and. You're welcome.
You handle transports, correct?
Okay, good question. So we don't, so this is an emergency medical service. So we're talking about, you know, acute or potentially acute type of calls rather than, um, you know, say trans, uh, transports between facilities.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, thank you. I did table this resolution at our last meeting and I so appreciate the fact that Shale did call to reach out to answer my questions before bringing the resolution forward too, because I too was under the impression that it was transportation service and wanted to learn more about the emergency medical treatment. I am so impressed that it's 100% community-supported through donations. I was pleased to learn that he was a West Orange resident with a young family. And as he just stated, that offering an additional service to the, to our residents. And they, Hatzalah does not bill the residents, the users, medical insurance companies. These are the questions that I was asking Medicaid or Medicare and it's purely volunteer, voluntary with, for residents. So I do appreciate the call and, and the fact they are in here in West Orange.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And Shale, where would you send, where would one send a donation to?
That's a great question. So I, we could take it as a, I think as a follow-up in terms of the, you know, the best, best route to do that. But what I could do in the meantime, if it's helpful, is to provide an email address. That would be easy to reach us at, um, which I'll, I'll just grab over here. Hang on just one second.
I'm sorry, I should have had, had a slide with, with, for it.
No, it's okay. I know we, we talked about that and I, um, yeah, I may, I may have inadvertently not sent it. But the email is W O, as in West Orange. And it's the word Hatzalah, which is H A T Z A L A H. So W O Hatzalah at gmail.com.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just sent that to everyone.
Oh, thank you.
The attendees and panelists.
Oh, you, you capture that right. Thank you.
No problem.
Beautiful. Warren, if we're able to get a slide to you, could we add it for the TV presentation or?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, wonderful. Thank you so much for coming to speak with us. We are thrilled that you're in our community. You're part of our community and whatever we could do, just please reach out to us at any time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And your computer is going to change again. Just don't touch anything and I'll send you back over to the attendee pool.
Okay.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, we could have a.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 2120?
I'll make a motion.
I made a motion.
A second?
Okay, Council, Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
I'm voting yes. And I also wanted to mention that after we tabled this, we did receive an email from a resident saying that it was an excellent experience. I'm not sure if everyone was copied on that, but I do appreciate residents reaching out.
Thank you.
And Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Warren, I'm sorry, resolution 228-20, uh, resolution authorizing the issuance of special emergency notes in an amount equal to the special emergency appropriation made for the purposes set forth in NJSA 48:4-53L and NJSA 48:4-54M in and by the township of West Orange in the county of Essex, New Jersey, was pulled by Councilman Kukoviac.
Okay, so Councilman, well, I'm Mr., I assume you want to, Mr. Gross to answer a few questions?
Well, actu- actually not. I had just asked ahead of the meeting to be provided with a breakdown of where the $7.8 million came from. And Mr. Gross in his email said he attached it, but it wasn't attached to my email. So I just wanted, so I don't feel like I have enough information to, uh, to vote for this. So I just wanted to pull it just so I could abstain.
Sure. And, and Mr. Gross, if, I'm sorry, Councilman, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Gross, just for the public's sake, this, so, so last meeting, we gave you a limit to, for a projection, if we were to have a shortage, which we do have a shortage by December 31st of this year. So question right now, where, where are you at with tax revenue? Where, where does that shortage put us, put us as of today?
Okay, first before I answer your question, Council President, I just wanted, um, Council, Councilman Kukoviac is correct. The email that I sent out did not have it in, but I sent a subsequent email out. So, and I, I appreciate his position on it, but just, you know, if he wants to take a look at it, it's, uh, we, I did send out a subsequent email, um, later, a little later on. So I do apologize, it wasn't in the original. When I discovered that, I, I tried to get it out to you. The, this, this particular emergency is to make up for, as I think, as you said, a potential shortage in revenues, taxes and other miscellaneous revenues at the end of the year, should it occur, uh, subsequent to the, the, the COVID, the issues that have come from COVID that have reduced our, our revenues. Right now, uh, at the end of the fourth quarter period, we're sitting about, not about, almost to the penny, $6 million left to, to pull in tax revenue. We're also still behind in, in many other categories. We will get better than that. You know, in the last week, we collected 700,000. It was 6.7 last week. This week is 600, I mean, 6 million, sorry. So I do expect it to get better. I don't know that it'll get back to historic numbers, uh, you know, for, in terms of the amount that we won't collect for the year. That's where we are now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gross. And then you, you'll update us before the, uh, we, obviously at the next meeting where we're at, correct?
Absolutely.
Does anyone else have a question, Council? Is that you, Council? I, I can't see you. So is that Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And this is for Mr. Gross. I, I saw the attachment that you sent out, the email. If you can please, um, since we didn't have an opportunity to review this in advance and I apologize for taking the time to do it here, however, I want to make sure that I understand what, what I'm voting for. So the attachment that was sent in the Excel spreadsheet, can you just tell me the itemization revenue tab, which is the second tab? And the collection period that is between January 1st and October 31st? I, obviously there, and, and for those who are in the public, what I am looking at is a list of revenue descriptions to include everything from ABC licenses to fees and permits, fines and municipal courts, interest on taxes, pilots for one, two, three, four, five, six programs that we have to include the senior citizen housing, um, that we have, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if, if, Mr. Gross, can you just tell me with respect to the collection period, the 2020 amount versus the 2019 amount? For the West Orange senior housing is currently 88,425. Last year was 117,900 and the list goes on from there. Are we anticipating recovering the balance of the 117,000?
Yeah. Well, we, we, we are anticipating. Now, you know, the, the value of that anticipation is what's in doubt. You know, this, this is, there's nothing magical here if you, in, in terms of the, the 217, 217 through 219 are our actual receipts. The 219 are our actual receipts through 1031. By definition, they're going to be short because only measuring through 10 12ths of the year. So we still have the other two 12ths of, of the year to go. So it, it, these numbers are, are more than two 12ths, the difference. So we're going to be short. Some areas, we're not going to be short. The, the issue is over the next six weeks, I don't know. I don't know what's going to come in and what's not. At, at, at the end of the day, we're only going to end up borrowing net-net the, the amount that brings us true to breaking even. We're not going to borrow more than that unless, you know, and over the long haul. Because we're, if, whatever we don't need, if we do, if we do borrow too much, if we don't need it, we, we have to give it back anyway. And so there's really just a transactional cost involved in that. There's no long-term cost. It's a protection. It's an insurance policy to make sure that as, as you enter into your next budget year, you're not entering in with deficits and, and problems that by law need to, need to be, would need to be cured. And leaving you no way to do that, but perhaps either large increases in taxes or draconian cuts in services. So this is an insurance policy to protect the township against those two things.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And I, I just wanted to highlight because it, it's not on the agenda and, and something that Council President mentioned earlier about the Edison redevelopment. One of the pilots here listed is Prism. And just from a point of reference, uh, in 2019, the amount that was connect, collected in revenue was 346,449. Uh, January through October of this year, current year, 2020, the amount collected thus far is 655,105. So already we've almost doubled what was collected in 2019. And I, I just wanted to point that out because Council President did mention you had the increase in revenue collected from that pilot and it's evident here. And, and the, the years prior, you can see the increases in the pilot payments. So I wanted to point that out. And lastly, um, Mr. Gross, if you can just talk about the, um, the rates at, at, at borrowing at this point, what, would, how does that impact us?
Yeah, these, these would be financed with, not with bonds, but with bond anticipation notes. And they are at historic lows, um, you know, anywhere from a quarter to a half a point annually, interest rate. So, you know, to the extent that we're doing this, um, the, the transaction cost, if you will, is minimal. Um, and, and as insurance goes, that's pretty, you know, fortunate and, and good.
Yep.
That's it for me, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for bringing up those points. I appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Sorry, Karen, you're muted. Sorry about that. Is there a motion to approve 228-20?
Some of.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Staying.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Madam Clerk, before we go on to the next resolution that was pulled, what I like to do is bring Mr. Lapore on the call because this resolution is going to be in conjunction with P. And I'd like for him to explain the, um, what we're doing at the baseball field. So I see that N and O were not pulled. So just, just real quick, Mr. Lapore, um, we did things a little bit out of order to accommodate the speaker. But can you just give us a quick rundown? Degnan Park, we have field improvements there. On the turf field, I mean, we, we don't have turf now. If you could just give us a quick rundown, because we're not only just turfing that field, we're shrinking it and having possibilities of improving the complex overall.
Sure, um, Degnan.
Sure. Degnan Park?
Yeah, let's start with that first. It's not pulled, but I just want you to touch base real quick.
Make improvements to the ball field that's there. We're going to put a, an artificial turf. We're going to pull in the outfield fences. We're going to have the ability. Unfortunately, I think Bill Keo or Edwin Johnson could comment, but they can have different age levels play here, because we're going to be able to vary base paths and pitchers' mounds. So, but the, but big improvement's going to be making an artificial turf there. Field is, gets wet, doesn't recover quickly. This will certainly make that field much more usable. I think as Councilman Guarino said, we are putting a, another product in the infill of the artificial turf that'll help keep it cooler. So that's what's basically we're doing at Degnan. It's broken into two contracts. There's one contract that does all the preparation work for the laying of the artificial turf, which is the second contract.
And, and just so my colleagues know, right now, so this, there's a scoreboard there that the PAL had donated. And if the high school or the school district, you know, they would have to provide, if they want to upgrade the scoreboard, that's on them. And if they want to put in dugouts, that's on them. We're just taking care of this field. Also, by shrinking it, because, and the, and the purpose for that is, it's, it's rather large, because we need room over by the Toby Katz Center, where hopefully we could gain a few more parking spots for a senior center, which would be great. And it also enables Mr. Keo to take the bleachers that right now are on the, on the street or the driveway and put it in the out, behind in the outfield. So it's just safer from when people are driving around the, driving around the driveway. There's always, it's always such a busy complex when things are in full swing there. So. Thank you, Mr. Lepore. On, on, anyone have any questions on the Degnan project? Is everybody good? I can't see everybody. So, Madam Moderator? Okay. Okay, now, the baseball infield is at, is the high school baseball field. And Mr. Lepore, if you could just talk to how, what the situation is here. I know the, the rec department uses this field along with the high school. So if you'd like to address that, please?
Sure. This infield is, is part of a much larger field. It's, it's the entire baseball outfield. There's a multi-use field that is also adjacent to this ball field. We're not talking about replacing the turf on the entire field, but the actual section that gets the most use, which has been the infield. This turf is now 14 years old, and it has shown its wear in the infield, and it's, it's time to replace it. The infield gets the greatest use of any part of that ball field, including the outfield and the multipurpose field. So this is again, a purchase through a cooperative services agency or cooperative purchasing agency, where we are able to purchase a replacement field for the high school. There are some, there is language that is in the agreement that talks about grading and drainage and landscaping and lighting. None of that is, is being performed here. It's strictly taking up the old field, or actually vacuuming out all the infill, taking up the old fill, field, laying out the new one, placing new infield.
And then I, I, it didn't get put in here, but it may be a possibility where they had to fix around the pitcher's mound, because that was dirt, and it's destroying the green in the infield, correct?
That, that's correct. There is some conversation between our rec department and the Board of Education, specifically to high school, how, how best to do that. There, there are more permanent solutions that are proposed by Field Turf. There are some portable solutions that may be better suited to our recreation needs. We just have to iron out what's, what's best for the community, and that has not been decided how to deal with the pitcher's mound yet.
Okay, and whether you or Mr. Gross could talk about who's, who's paying for what, what we're paying for, what the school district's paying for?
Well, the township, the township would pay for the project upfront, and then over a, a period of time, the the district would repay 50% to the township.
Okay. Councilman Kukoviac, I know you pulled these two. Do you have any further questions?
No, this is, this is just something I'm, I'm opposed to, for the town to be spending any money on school district property. And the state law, you know, allows or requires that just about every borrowing that a school, you know this probably better than me.
Yeah.
Most borrowing by school district has to go for voter approval. And this is, this avoids that, and I'm, I'm just opposed to it. So that's why I pulled it. I just wanted to.
Okay.
Council President? Council President may ask?
Go ahead, Councilman.
So I remember one of our budget hearings, and not this year, but where Director Keo, he actually had numbers, and again, you may know this too, about how frequently the town uses the fields plus the Board of Education. Do you recall that, or, and I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I remember him specifically explaining the percentages.
So it, it is, it, it's about a 50/50% shot, and sometimes even more, because not only, I mean, as far as the infill goes with baseball, obviously the high school, you know, uses that field. In regards to the, the rec, the PAL, which is the rec program, the, and they use that field for, you know, their older, the older leagues. And it's the, the, the whole discussion, they're trying to work out the, I got, I was talking to Mr. Keo today. They, they were trying to work out the whole situation with the pitching mound, because the high school had wanted one system, one mound, and the rec really, in order for us to really still utilize it, fully utilize it as we do, we needed the one that can convert to a 50/70 field. And I know Councilman Kukoviac knows that language, because he is a, a ball player. So that was the, the issue. Also with that field, I mean, the PAL football is on there every night during their season, and, and the soccer utilizes it as well. Go, go ahead, Councilman Guarino.
No, not to interrupt the Council President, but yes, a mountaintop, remember, those fields are all used by mountaintop and, and, and West Orange United Soccer. So the baseball field's included for soccer games, as in, you know, Lincoln Field. No, I'm just saying. So just to support what you're saying that,
Yeah.
you know, it's not just the high school, and basically the rec programs and the club programs use those fields significantly more than the, the high school. So.
That's what I recall.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's like even, you know, Mr. Keo moving those, those, for the softball games, the, the bleachers to the, to the back is again, safety, because there's cars constantly coming in and out of that complex. Okay, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Gross or Mr. Lepore? Okay, Madam Clerk, you want to take 229-21st?
She muted again?
Karen, you're muted again. I'm sorry.
She's talking behind our backs.
You know, I'm coughing, so I'm like trying to mute myself. But resol- is there a motion to approve 229-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. And then, Madam Clerk, if you could just take 241-20 next, and I'll go back, backwards.
241-20 is a resolution authorizing an award of contract for the removal and replacement of the artificial turf baseball infield at the West Orange High School. Is there a motion to approve 241-20?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
And then we have Resolution 234-20, Resolution authorizing an application to join the Bergen Municipal Employees Benefits Fund to provide retiree Medicare Advantage health benefits to township retirees at or over the age of 65. Councilwoman Matute Brown pulled this.
Okay, so, 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 Mr. Gross, so just real quick, I believe Mr. Gross, 233 and 234 go hand in hand?
Uh, let me.
Because that's pulled also.
233 was not pulled.
I don't, I think, did you pull 233, Councilwoman?
No, just 234.
Oh, I, I apologize. Okay. Okay, go, go, go ahead, Councilman, you could address Mr. Gross with.
Thank you. So, so just to be clear, Count, Mr. Gross, it is the Bergen Municipal Employees Benefit Fund?
Yes, I apologize for the confusion earlier today, but it is as originally sent to you is correct. It is the Bergen Municipal Employees Benefit Fund. Yep, for FYI, the other, the other fund exists, it's a sister fund to it, and it's run by the, the, the same people, the same group. It's just, so there was some confusion over as to which group we were dealing with, but we've got that resolved.
Okay, thank you. So I, I did have a few questions, and, and this is going to take me putting on my reading glasses, because some of this print was very small in the attachment that you sent for Fairview as a comparison. I appreciate you sending that, but even with my reading glasses and I printing it out, it was hard for me to see. Can you, so this resolution says, well, my first question is, I know it's the equal to or better clause with the unions, and I saw the email asking for supportive documentation with respect to the equal to or better clause. Can you go down the Fairview list in comparison to the Aetna?
Well, I can't, I'm.
I, I want to understand how we're saving a million, is it a million 300,000 in 2021?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, in term, in terms of the benefits, the, the benefits are guaranteed to be the same. You have to take that. Remember that this is only impacting employee, employee retirees who are over the age of 65, who have Medicare and Medicare Part B. So our policy now is basically a wraparound for that in, in, in terms of, so for instance, if they pay 80% or if, if Medicare pays 80%, the employee pays 20%, well, we're paying that 20% now. So they, they've been able to give us a rate that's much more favorable to our actual claims. That's the, 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 the only way to put it. And I, they've been able to do it. They're, they're guaranteeing it, guaranteeing it for us for the year. Their history has been very low increases over a period of time. We actually, you know, there's, there's, it, it's a, the, the, the entire group, and there's different family of funds are very well respected and have, have a good track record. So we feel that at this point, we, we think that it's worth trying. It's a Medicare Advantage plan. It's, there's be savings, you know, the, keep in mind, one of the things this does differently, we, we're self-insured for medical, but we go out and get a third party for prescription claims, this all combined. So, so the, they feel they, they, they could save enough money on prescription in the prescription areas in order to be able to fund this and, and make it go, make it work. It's good for, it's good for, it's good for the retirees. They go from having to deal with two different companies down to one company.
Are there, are there any additional out-of-pocket expenses? I see that the maximum out-of-pocket expenses is 1,222. And the member cost sharing is reduced to zero. Is that the municipality's responsibility?
I'm sorry, tell me again where you're looking.
So this is.
I can give you the short answer. The short answer is there are no additional costs other than what we have here. Now, with, with the following exception, I will tell you there, there is what is not calculated in here, and we think that it's a, it's a minimal cost, is right now, members have a policy. So it's a member and a spouse. So this breaks it up into member, tho- those people who are over 65 into their own policy, and if their spouse is over 65, they'll have their own policy, and there, that's all accounted for. What's not accounted for here are spouses, their, or situation where the spouse has, I'm sorry, one, one is 65, over 65, and one is under 65. So they will then have to, the one who's under 65 will stay with, with our plan, and the one that's so 65, we'll move to the other plan. It's kind of difficult to, to, at this point, to, to talk, to, to calculate the differences in there. But, but again, it's, it's not a lot of people, and it's pretty nominal. Otherwise, what you see is, is, is what it's going to be.
Okay, and I, I did notice that the Benicard is no longer going to be is not, is no longer going to be the prescription plan for those on this coverage. Is there any term, early termination fee with Benicard in this regard?
No, because we're not terminating. We're reducing the number of participants, and that we're allowed to do.
And that, being allowed to do that, reducing the number of participants, is that going to impact or affect whatsoever the cost that, that we will be responsible for, or our insureds will be responsible for moving forward?
Certainly not this year, because we're guaranteed a flat increase for, for 2021.
Benicard?
Yes.
Okay. I, I have a few more questions. I'm just making a note. Just bear with me, please. And then I know I was reading the, I, I, this is not numbered, so I apologize that I can't refer to a page, but it is under the Indemnity and Trust Agreement. And it talks about the local unit being, that's the local unit of government, us.
Yes.
Um, accepting the funds bylaws as approved and adopted. I, I don't know what those are. I, I would trust that you would share what, a, a high-level overview of what those bylaws entail or how they impact our contract with.
They're, they're, they're pretty standardized. They're regulated by the state. I, I haven't seen the detail of these, and before we, obviously, we would sign the final, we'll make sure that, that there's, there are no zingers in there, but, 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 but the, the state regulates those bylaws and what they're allowed to. So there's, there shouldn't be anything in there that, that is of surprise.
Okay, so that was number one for, for my council colleagues who may be following. And number three, it talks about subject to early release or termination pursuant to the bylaws, and the membership would commence on January 1st, 2021, and ending December 23rd, 2023. Do you know what the early release or termination clause indicates?
I don't, I don't have that for you tonight. We, we certainly can, we'll, we'll, we'll find, get that for you. It's pretty, again, it's regulated by the state. It's pretty standard stuff. All, all JIFs have three-year requirements to go in. And you, you, you have to, basically, the, for instance, the one we're already in, if we were to leave, it, it's kind of a negotiation to, to leave, because they, they also want you to come back. They, they're hoping you'll, you'll, you'll have a bad experience and come back to them. So it's, and, and you're dealing with other municipalities. So they treat you kind of like a municipality would want to be treated in, in these situations. Not, not like dealing with a, a third-party insurance company. So.
And, and so no longer being self-insured in this respect for the Medicare portion. I, I was looking for information on administrative fees. How is that calculated?
The only administrative, well, they have their own administrative fees. We're, we're paid. Um, the only administrative, well, they have their own administrative fees, we're, we're paid, um, we're going to pay an actual premium rate, so there's no, there's no add-on, I think there, there are, there are commission fees in there that are comparable to the commissions that we pay now in terms of brokerage, and I think that's where you're going at, um, so the, the broker fees in this conversion will not increase, they'll stay the same as what they are, uh, for whatever, whoever the broker is, um, moving forward over those three years period. Other than that, there's no, there's no, um, um, other, other fees that, uh, similar, like right now, uh, with our, with our other plan, we have, we have to buy the, uh, excess coverage insurance, that's part of the administrative fee.
Is that the stop loss?
Yeah, that's the stop loss.
Um, we're still purchasing the stop loss?
That's for our, that's for the rest of our plan.
For the rest of the plan, that doesn't include the retirees?
Right, has nothing, because we're not at risk, this is, this is pure insurance, so we're not at risk for the Medicare Advantage.
Okay.
That's why, that's where the big advan, that's where, why we're saving money is, is again, the, the rates that they're willing to pick, charge us are less than our, our claim rate, uh, and, and the, the big savings in there has to be prescription, because they're picking up the prescription, I think they think they can do better.
Okay, um, tho- those were all the questions that I had, if you can, you know, once you do, um, have the bylaws, I'd be interested in reading them as well. Thank you, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, um.
President, I have a question on this.
Sure, sure, Ca- uh, Councilman Krokoviac, had his hand up first, if you could, just. Go ahead, Councilman.
He's shaking his head.
He said, forget it.
Oh, forget it?
Oh, you're muted, Mr. Krokoviac.
Are you saying ladies first? Joe, you're muted.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilwoman, please.
Oh, okay, well, my, I was just, uh, even backing up, that this is a resolution authorizing the application to join the Bergen Municipal Employers', Employees' Benefit, uh, for retirees. I, I'm just curious, I guess my question is, how did you research this, or how was this brought to your attention to even find such a dramatic savings of one point three million dollars?
Was found by our broker.
Bro.
Was found by our broker.
And brought it to your attention.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, you, go ahead.
Yes, please, I, I just noticed that the resolution says that the mayor has recused himself from this, uh, any, any participation in this. Uh, does, does anybody in the administration know the nature of the recusal?
Uh, uh, Councilman, you asked this question, I guess each of the last five years, he's, the, the mayor has been recusing himself on all these issues, and you, you need to talk to him, any, anytime, as you know, a recusal is a personal thing, it's not, it's not a legal thing, it's in, it's, someone's told that they have to, it's, you, you need to talk to him about that.
Yeah, oh, oh, okay, that's fine, I just was, I just was wondering, because it, you know, uh, Fairview is, is involved in all of these decisions, and I just wonder if he has a business relationship with Fairview that, that you knew about?
I do not know the answer to, and I don't, I have no reason to believe that, number one, and, and number two, I don't know what his reason for rec- recusal is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gross, reading through their website today, um, they have a, you know, they, they place a lot of emphasis on preventive care and wellness, if all employees have access to wellness porno, uh, portals and personal health and coach, so they have a lot of perks when you read through it, are those perks extended to the retiree plans as well?
You, you're asking whether or not they're, a- all those different things, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I would kick, they are, but I don't know the answer to.
Okay, would you be able to find out for us, I'm just curious to see what, if they get additional perks with this plan as well?
Sure.
Okay. Does anyone else, everybody's good, Councilman Garino, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, um, Councilwoman, um, Matute Brown, you're good, I know you. Okay.
Yes, Anne, thank you.
Thank you, okay, Madam Clerk, if you'd like to.
Sure, is there a motion to approve 234-20?
Some more. Second.
Okay, Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Uh, yes, and I, I just wanna, I should have stated just a few seconds ago, but, uh, kudos to our broker for finding us a million dollars in, in savings, so that's always good.
Amen.
Okay, ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-six, twenty-one dash.
We have a couple more questions, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, so we approved the consent agenda, but i- anyone, go ahead, Councilman, what, what do you have a question on, which item?
Oh, I feel like there were a lot of questions, um, this is on Resolution 242-20, a resolution, though, I'm definitely in favor of this, purchasing of a gazebo, and in the resolution it says to reconstruct the gazebo at Auspect that's already there.
Yeah, there's that one there.
Okay, that's what, I was just curious, where is it, and unless it's behind the stage on that patio back there?
Is it up, is it up by Crystal Lake?
That's what I mean, I think it may be, um, you know, where they have the fishing derby behind, it's actually behind the, um, the stage area. I didn't know if anyone could answer that, I was just curious, because.
I think that's, I think that's where it is, Councilwoman, that's when they used to have the, the liquor sales and everything else up there when they had some events, you know, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Mr., is Mr. LaPorte still here?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Um, apparently this is, I think, as Councilman Garino said, where there have been previous liquor sales or, or a beer garden.
But they're planning, Mr. LaPorte, are they planning on putting this, where they had the tent this year?
I bel- I believe so, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, um.
What, what other questions, did you have, Councilwoman?
This is not a question, but just a comment, because they were not pulled, these are the resolutions authorizing Blough and Blount prosecute affirmative, we don't usually see things like this, tax appeals, I wanted to give you a little bit of history here, um, the, this happened about six years ago, which was a simple question, asking our tax assessor and, uh, Mr. Blough, it, and Mr. Hendri- Hendricks, uh, that we were seeing more and more cell tower equipment on planning board applications and zoning board applications, and I found out through the tax assessor's office that the cell companies were only being assessed on their equipment and not on their land, and due to our topography, we were in high demand, so it was, started out as a question about why are we not taxed, why are they not being taxed on their land, and, um, I was so pleased to see that Mr. Blough pursued this, and, um, I've come to find out that this settlement that he will be prosecuting would result in approximately seven hundred and thirty thousand more dollars in taxes, with an additional fifty thousand more each year moving forward, so, uh, simple questions, uh, just really, really pleased to see both of these, on cell tower, cell tower equipment in the township, so.
Great question, Councilwoman.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What else? Oh, and I, Anne DeSantis was on the call, I guess the question goes back to the fire equipment, and can we find out if they are energy efficient, and what we're looking to purchase the ambulance and the.
Oh.
I can, I can address that, this particular ambulance is, is probably typical, uh, of, of, of a, of a purchase, uh, and, and the reason being is, is that, as you recall, uh, we'd lost an ambulance in an act, an accident some time ago, and we've been waiting to replace it, uh, and we couldn't commit to replace it until, uh, we got the insurance money back, and we had to supplement it with some additional capital this year, and we are in dire need of one, this one happens to be available. Um, so while the, the mayor has charged us moving forward with putting together a plan of how to transition to, um, w- more energy-efficient and energy-friendly, um, sources for our vehicles, this particular one, uh, is of, uh, be- because it's available, and we don't, we don't, it doesn't require us to wait a year to get it, uh, to fill in our fleet in the meantime, uh, because of the loss that we had last year from an accident.
Thank you, and I do appreciate moving forward, that we are looking at that fleet inventory, thank you.
Thank you, uh, I just, um, okay, just real quick, Mr. Gross, the, the, the other, the other vehicles that we were waiting on due to COVID, uh, the police vehicles, um, are, are they here yet, or are they still backordered?
I'll have to check, I think, I, 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 I don't want to give you an answer off the top of my head, I saw a couple of things come in, it leads me to believe at least a couple of them are here, but I'll, I'll have to check on that.
Okay, and I'd like to know if they were, I'd like to know if any of those vehicles are in circulation for patrolling.
Okay.
Thanks.
Council President, I had a question, if, if Councilwoman McCartney is, is.
I'm done, thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, I, I want it, it's not really a question, Mr. Gross, if you can just discuss, uh, resolution, item J, Resolution 235-20, um, determining the form and other details of not to exceed four million five hundred thousand principal amount refunding bonds, can you please just, for, um, the public, uh, talk about what that means?
Sure, um, th- this is a refunding of bonds that were sold back in two thousand and eleven, um, it's ten amount to refinance in your house. Uh, the, the rates now come down sufficiently that the, the, the borrowing that we did back in two thousand and eleven, it now exceeds, the savings exceeds a total of three percent, uh, which is a statutory, uh, requirement, and, uh, allowing us to do a refinance and save taxpayer dollars, and that's what we're doing.
Yep.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, everybody good with, uh, the consent agenda?
Yes.
Great, thank you, okay, Madam Clerk, uh, ordinance twenty-six, it's twenty-one dash twenty.
Right, ordinance authorizing special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon dash, uh, I'm sorry, col- colon four dash fifty-three for severance liabilities resulting from unanticipated required accumulated absence payouts in connection with the layoff or retirement of employees, is there a motion to introduce on second reading?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes, okay, um, this is on second and final reading, so the public does have an opportunity to speak on this ordinance only, um, Madam Moderator, do we have anybody in the audience? If you're out there, please raise your hand, if you'd like to address the council on this ordinance only.
Yeah, so if anyone, uh, would like to speak on this, um, this one, it's the raise your hand button. And there are no takers.
Okay, thank you, uh, this is up for council discussion, any of my colleagues have any comments on this?
Nope.
Okay, with that, uh, Madam Clerk? Vocal.
Karen, you've muted yourself. Oh, good lord, okay, is there a motion to approve twenty-six, twenty-one dash twenty?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-six, twenty-two dash twenty, refunding bond ordinance providing for the refunding of all or a portion of the outstanding general obligation bonds, series twenty-eleven of the Township of West Orange, appropriating four, four million five hundred thousand, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of four million five hundred thousand dollar refunding bonds of the township for financing the cost there. Uh, is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move. Second.
Okay, Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes, is there any members of the public wishing to speak on ordinance, uh, twenty-six, twenty-two dash twenty, please raise your hand?
And we have no one raising their hand.
Okay, thank you, okay, so we just had discussion with the, uh, resolution, uh, this was a savings of over, uh, three percent. Thank you, Mr. Gross, for your due diligence, um, I see Councilman Krokoviac, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Council President, just, just a very small, uh, item, I noticed in the supplemental debt statement that, uh, one of the additions to our issued and authorized debt was, I think, a quarter of a million dollars, uh, that specifically cited the refunding, I, I'm assuming that it's, it's, uh, providing upfront, uh, s- um, cost of issuance, but I just wanted to check on that with you, Mr. Gross.
Uh, perhaps, uh, generally speaking, when you do refunding, you put a little extra in, because you just never know exactly how it's gonna play out, how, whether the, what the par value is gonna be, um, it, it, it's, it's put in there, it could be used for cost of issuance, the last time we did one, we didn't use it at all, and we ended up canceling it, so it's, it's, hate to say it's housekeeping, but it is kind of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gross, any of my other colleagues have any questions or statement? Okay, seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, a motion?
Is there a motion to approve twenty-six, twenty-two dash twenty?
Some move. Second.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-six, twenty-three dash twenty, ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of, wow, seven million eight hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents, or such other amounts certified by the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for the purposes set forth in NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-three L, and forty-eight colon four dash fifty-three M, uh, in and by the Township of West Orange, is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Uh, I'm abstaining.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes, the members of the public wish to speak on twenty-six, twenty-three dash twenty, please raise your hand.
And there's no one raising their hand.
Okay, seeing that, um, we just had a full discussion, uh, in regards to when we passed the resolution that was in conjunction with this ordinance, with Mr. Gross, do my, uh, colleagues have any other questions on this matter? Okay, uh.
Council President, I, I'd just like to mention, um, that, um, a, a little over a month ago, the, the governor signed the legislation that would allow this.
Yeah.
The Division of Local Government Services came up with criteria to give us to, to get it done, and we, we got it introduced and seconded it, and during, in the interim in between, I was able to work with the division, and I think we're going to be the first approval, we, we got the first approval on this, um, which is important, because in order to do it right and to have its maximum impact, you have to be able to get the borrowing in before the end of the year, and a lot of people, a lot of towns probably will not get to do that, just because it's, it's just that tight, so we've been very fortunate, so I wanted to, uh, do something I don't normally do, but thank the division, uh, for, for being, for working with us to get this thing, so.
And, and, and thank you for all your diligence on this, uh, Mr. Gross, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gives us a, a little sigh of, 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 uh, be able to breathe, uh, for the end of the year.
Um, Madam Clerk? Council President, before you, I, I just also. Council President, I just also wanted just to make a public statement because I know that borrowing is a concern for us all, and I, and I just wanted to be sure, to be clear for those who are listening and, or who will be listening, that this is a matter of, of necessity at this point. Everyone has been affected by the pandemic. This allows us to be able to continue to function as, as, as we need to. And as Mr. Gross said earlier, what's not used, it will be returned. I think that, you know, the, the, the cost of, of not doing so is greater than the added debt that we are about to incur. It's just a necessity. So I just wanted to be clear in stating that. I think that, you know, my council colleagues agree with the need to do this. And thank you, Mr. Gross, for working diligently on this.
Thank, thank you, Councilwoman, because to that point, you know, we would have been looking at layoffs. So this, this, this helps us to move forward in 2021.
And Council President John is thanking the division, but I wanted to thank John too for pursuing this because we did talk about this at length during our budget hearings. And the fact that, you know, you stayed with it and the governor signed bonds, I mean, signed the bill.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Good job.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2623-20?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Abstaining.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Ordinance 2616-20, an ordinance establishing Chapter 5, Section 26, and amending Chapter 25, Sections 27.3 and 27.4 of the revised general ordinances, tree protection and removal permit required, prohibitions and exemptions. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. And this is the public's opportunity. I, I know many members spoke in the beginning of the, the meeting of public comment. If there's anyone still out there like to talk about this. Ordinance 2616-20, please raise your hand for our moderator.
And we have no one raising their hand.
The wrong one.
Okay, before I turn it over to my colleagues, I know it says Mr. Trank's name here, but I will relieve him and, and bring up Mr. Gross. We've, we've been all working on this for a while.
Did you mean Mr. Kizer?
No, no, I mean, I, I'm not Mr. Gross, I'm sorry, Mr. Lepore, I'm getting tired. Mr. Lepore?
Yes.
I'm not sure if Mr. Linton is on some dark road in Virginia with his.
He's still, he's still here.
Are you still there? Oh, God bless you, John. So, so a few things. A few things changed since the last time we went from a 15-foot tree down to the four inch, we went back to four inch. Reason for changes, we were having many conversations on our variety trees, you, you and I. My concern has been, you know, bordering landscape items that constitutes a shrub more than a tree. So what conclusion did you come up with, gentlemen, how we're going to handle those kinds of situations? For my colleagues, just so you know, you, you have somebody that, you know, buys a home, they have some varieties on their property line, they want to take them down to build a fence, to put a fence up for their children, or they may have a dog. You know, we, there's got to be a balance with our, our tree ordinance as well. So how did we, what was the resolution to that?
John, do you want to comment on this?
Um, yeah, I, I think so. You know, basically, if they're, they're individual bushes, you know, that, that, you know, we're, we're obviously intended to be a low hedge or, or something in front of a home or something like that, we'll, we'll just, I think we'll continue to accept them as, as bushes, but if they actually have, they're like on the perimeter of the property and they've grown to be 40 feet tall, you know, we, we would be issuing, issuing a permit as a, as a tree. You know, I, I think if it's in a foundation planting around the house, it's obviously a bush and it's not a tree. Around the perimeter of the property, I, I think I have to look at it on an individual basis, but in most cases, you know, a, a, as long as they're making an improvement, I, I don't think we would, we would penalize them by denying it.
Okay. Madam Moderator, can you please put the, oh, no, no, we were doing a share screen. Mr. Gross, can you share your screen? I asked Mr. Lepore and Mr. Linton to work on some information for the public on his concern is, the concerns were, you know, how would we would implement this within the township administration? So we, Mr. Lepore worked on some graphics for us, or PDF that we could share for the public and for you to see, because this is televised. We needed, we wanted to walk through on if, you know, how, how you would register your, the tree companies. Away from Mr. Gross. Mr. Lepore, if you want to start.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, that's okay. He could, he could start talking about it while you're. That's why I asked you to do it. I didn't have a shot getting that posted with my text skills.
Well, a few things.
What do you want, Lenny? Which one you want first?
Well, you, I can go through just some of the typical forester service that Mr. Linton or any forester would provide, just so that you see that he, he administers the tree protection and removal ordinance.
Very good. That it, Len?
That's it. So, so these are some of the services that the forester provides. It's, it's not just limited to the tree protection and removal ordinance, but you do see that here in, in some of the tasks that he provides under that. He does provide assistance to private property owners. You know, helps them with trees that they may have on their property, or he may be able to answer questions about plantings that they want to make along their, or within their property. Also, he is the expert for our property maintenance division when it comes time to addressing hazardous trees or dead trees. And then he's vital to the Public Works Department as far as us maintaining our trees, identifying trees that we need to prune, trim, if trees are hazardous. He also is very instrumental in our annual tree planting programs. Keeps us up to date with our, our community forestry management plan, as well as Tree City USA certification. And then he also does the arranging for Arbor Day tree planting and ceremonies. So those are some of the functions that, that he does. So when it comes time to tree removal, if we go to the next sheet, John, or the next two sheets.
So, Mr. Lepore, I want you to, you know, talk to the change in the ordinance in regards to the, the, the property line with two. Okay, you have it right there. Perfect. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so again, if you want to remove a tree, if you're going to remove four or more trees in a 360-day period, that requires a permit. That's not a change from the existing ordinance. What will be a change is any tree that a, a property owner wants to remove within two feet of a property line now requires a permit. So even if it's just one tree within two feet of a property line, a permit's required. We still will have the tree removal report criteria. So if you're going to remove up to three trees in a 365-day period, you have to file a report no later than five days before removal. This too is a change, not so much the number of three trees in a 365-day period, but the fact that this report has to be submitted no later than five days before the trees are removed. Also, non-viable trees, or trees that are an immediate hazard to the public health and welfare. A tree removal report must be filed within five days after the removal. No permits required, but you still have to file the tree removal report. We do have, we will be posting on our website all the permit application and removal report procedures. That will be visible on, on our website, but you can also call Mr. Linton. You can call engineering, you can email forester@westorange. All contractors are going to be registered with the town, and we will have those forms available onsite for contractors to register. Because this ordinance is, change in this ordinance over our existing is that contractors who remove trees must be registered with the township. Now, there are some organizations that do currently certify and license companies to do work, so if people want to see a sample, they, they can look at a state website, and that would be www新 Jersey Tree Experts.org. So those are some of the, the changes that this ordinance would implement.
Okay, so, so the other piece of this is how we're going to get this out to the public. So just a couple things. Let's start with the contractors. Are we going to, do we have a database of the contractors that have applied for permits? Can we email them? Can we get information out to them? So they know that now, they now have to register.
That, that's one of the things we will be doing. I think the state has a very good database already because those are people that meet the criteria that will also meet our criteria. So we will certainly stop, start with them. How far we go geographically, I think is a decision John Linton and I have to make, but there are also other trade organizations that we can notify to let their members know that if you are going to do tree work on private property in the township of West Orange, you're going to need to register with the town.
And Mr., and Mr., I'm going to bring Mr. Sares into this conversation because this is his domain now, so, so my recommendation is to work with Mr. Fagan and Mr. Bashkov in regards to, you know, I think we should do a press release to get out to the local media venues. Facebook post ad to let them know that they, you know, there's a change. And also, if, if Mr. Sares, I know with, with COVID, it's been tough. We usually have the senior stuff, tax bills. I know the first quarter tax bill is going out. And lastly, with Ms. Quark, I know she handles new residence packets. We ha, I know she was giving the, the, posting this with the tree ordinance if, if she could get this amendment in there, because without the public knowing about it, you know, again, that, that's a big problem. So we could have all the ordinances in the world, but we have to let people know that it's out there.
Sure. Yeah, we'll advertise it.
Okay, but if you could let us know what the plan, if you get back to us with the plan, and so we know what, what, what occurred, so we could look for it. Okay.
One other suggestion.
Sure.
One other suggestion that Sean Linton. Reliable Wood Products and Rotandi are two local recycling centers that accept wood chips and logs, and we can post notification at each of those facilities as these tree contractors are coming in with wood waste.
Okay. Thank you. And of course, wherever on, on the website. Mr., you know, under wherever we have it on the website. Okay, so I'm going to open this up to my colleagues to ask questions. Councilman Guarino?
No questions.
You're good? Councilman Krokoviac? Are you muted, Councilman?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have any further questions. I just want to say, I thought it was a good move to take out the 15-foot height requirement that was proposed to be added. I, I think that's an improvement as well. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No questions, just look forward to additional conversations on, and moving forward with the ordinance to make it more reflective of the needs of climate protection and the voices of those who are advocates here in town, but I have no other questions.
And Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I appreciate Councilwoman, what you were saying, Council President, what you were saying about making this, making the public aware of this. I do know through conversations with the forester that there are what, over 100 names of tree companies that we can already post on the information on our website. There is a letter that the forester has prepared that will go out to all of those contractors that do business in town, so I do appreciate that. The whole application can be presented as a package, and definitely the, the need for an education campaign. I, I did notice on our attendees, usually our newspaper representatives are there, they're not there this evening. So all the more reason why we will work to get this information out to the public. And thank you, thank you, everybody, for weighing in. Thank you, if people in the public are still listening. Thank you for your comments and, and support of this.
And, and I know he's sitting there quietly, but I, I also want to thank Mr. Kizer. He's been, as well as Ms. Lepore, Mr. Linton, and, and, and Mr. Trank, they've been some tedious phone conversations we've been having. You know, just trying to get this right, just trying to, you know, I know, I know, I've been stubborn with various scenarios of, you know, finding that balance for the homeowner as well as protecting our environment. And, you know, I, I think this, this does it, but again, we, we have to work on the, the getting, getting the information out there to the public, so they, they know it, this is. And educating. Now, now the step, I just want to. Go ahead.
I think that was John Linton.
That's just an echo.
So just, just real quick, it's not in this ordinance, so I'll kind of break in my own role, but I have Mr. Linton on right now. Going back to the piece with the earlier conversation on Rollison Street, how, you know, again, it seems like you went through the steps according to the policy. So, Mr. Lepore, you're going to get that, the policy to the council? Or where to find it in regards to how pub, you know, dealing with public works and you're going out on, on the, because it seems like, you know, it's a problem, it becomes problematic when dealing with the residents, asking them to take down these trees when there are some issues and they appear to be healthy. So, and, and there are situations with inoculation. Do, do we, you know, again, are those are just. Do we, you know, again, are those are just calls you're going to make as the administration? Is there anything you as the administration could look into to try to see if we could try inoculating some of these trees to, even if they're safe for another five, 10 years?
Well, I think we can look at that. I'll go over some of the numbers and the costs. And we'd see if there's a cost benefit to that. I think that's something Councilman Greeno was talking about earlier.
Okay, great. All right, Ed, does any of my colleagues have anything to add to this conversation? Or does administration have anything to add to this conversation?
Council President, just to piggyback off of what you, your conversation now with the inoculation and what Mr. Lepore referenced as weighing or doing a cost analysis or the cost benefits. I would just argue that $100 to $200 annually per tree, depending on the number of trees that we have. If we can extend the life for another five to 10 years, or I believe Mr. Linson actually said for a lot longer, it should be our focus to do so where possible. I know that safety concerns with respect to sidewalks and, you know, leading to liability for the municipality is also a concern. But where we can, I'd advocate for inoculation as opposed to replacement of trees.
So Council President, I wanted to add to that. This has been one of those conversations where we're saying, yes, we're moving in the right direction. But yet there is still more work to go. What is not in this ordinance, and we still need to figure out how to do is a replacement plan. Because it's really not one-to-one. You know, if someone's taking trees down, they may not have the space to put any more trees back. We have talked about creating a tree fund. And that if they're not able to replace a tree, they can contribute to this tree fund. Again, we'd have to work out the details for that, because tree work is awfully expensive to begin with. But using that tree fund, I guess we would have to find out, is that possible to use that for an inoculation system or whatever you call it, moving forward?
Okay, great.
Is that something, John, is that something? Do you know, can a tree fund, can the funds from the tree fund be used for inoculating trees?
It can be used to maintenance if that's how you've created it. Yeah. It's a dedicated account. And so if those are the conditions that it's used for the planting or maintenance of trees, I think you can do that.
Is that something else that you can help us find more information on this tree fund? And creating a tree fund, if other municipalities have that, can you provide that information?
Yeah, many of our surrounding communities have such a thing. Milburn does, Livingston, Florham Park. I believe Moncler and Bloomfield, I believe, too.
Okay. That information that you can get to us, that we can review?
Yep, that seems to be the way, the way people are going in terms of sustainability and maintaining a tree canopy coverage in the municipality.
Good, that's what we're aiming for. All right, thank you. Any information you can find would be appreciated.
The mechanics of creating a fund is not difficult. Funding is the difficult.
Exactly, exactly.
And since John Linson is still on, John, something that I mentioned before, I actually asked to discuss later. As you are consulting with other municipalities, looking at the shade tree commissions for, let's say, Verona, South Orange, and just looking at Morris, Morristown in particular, their shade tree commission has robust minutes on their website to include discussions about fall planting, systemic, systematic trimming, public tree loss in the storms and replacements thereof. I want to hear from you whether or not you have, A, worked with tree commissions in other municipalities? And if so, have you found them to be helpful and supportive? As a layman, right, perspective, I would imagine that the more hands-on deck trying to balance the overall oversight, if you will, in an advisory capacity, at least for this councilwoman, would be incredibly helpful. Particularly from those residents who are more fine-tuned and certainly have greater awareness in their advocacy. As I'm just learning about tree canopies and its protection. Would you feel that working with a tree shade commission would be beneficial to our township?
That's a good question. The tendency is to have more of an advisory board as opposed to a commission. The commission usually connotates they have control over funding. And that's always, you know, right now, that's, funding is pretty much handled through public works. But the community forestry management plan, the whole system is, there is a component where they want volunteers to be involved in the shade tree program. And for the most part, that provides another sets of eyes who are, you know, looking for tree issues, tree hazards in particular. Hanging branches, storm damage, uprooted trees. You know, so, you know, the community forest changes every time there's a storm. There's something new. But Arbor Day, Arbor Day is a very important focus. I have, in Summit, I have a really good group that they're attaching tags onto all the trees we're planting this fall. Showing the species and how to care for the tree, how to water the tree. And it's a very, very well-balanced grassroots committee of people that are actually helpful and doing some really good things for the town. One little facet of it, they have a group called Summit Suckers who goes around doing branch elevation on newly planted trees. Taking care of the lower branches, looking for co-dominant stems. Because the first few years a tree's planted is a very critical time. And so they have a, you know, we do some training programs for the people and we provide hand tools for them. And we do a little bit of pruning from the ground, leaving little piles behind them for public works to pick up. It works out pretty nicely. So you don't necessarily want somebody involved in the day-to-day operation. But in developing policies, you know, it's very helpful. And there is a training. We're supposed to get continuing education units. Eight units per year by two different people. You know, there's a convention, we're members of the New Jersey Shade Tree Federation. And Joe McCartney has been our volunteer, our dedicated volunteer. And when I attend these conferences, I attach a number of my CEUs to West Orange. So, but it really would be good to have, they have what they call a core training program where it's an all-day program that breaking in people who would serve on a committee like this. You know, just the functions that they should be attending to. Some towns, you know, are not quite as sophisticated as we are. And they actually assign parts of the town to different people on these committees. And they're supposed to, you know, ride through their circuit of town. You know, looking for tree, tree issues. So, you know, it's, there's room, there's room for more volunteer effort. We have, we have some very, very dedicated people that want to be part of this. So I think if we can, if we can create a defined description of how much we want them to do and maybe, you know, rein them in a little bit. But I am very sensitive to their concerns about sustainability. And our current ordinance is very good on development, any applications before the zoning or planning board. We're very good on replacing trees and maintaining at least 30% of the trees on a job site. But on an individual property, you know, we're losing ash trees all over town. Bacterial leaf scorch on pin oaks has really taken a turn for the worse. We've been losing a lot of pin oaks. And they also are very problematic in storms. So we're losing some of these larger trees in our tree canopy. And we are replacing them with smaller, more compact trees. Somebody referred to them as lollipop trees. But in the past, you know, we didn't have, you know, we weren't required to have markouts for underground utilities. And trees were planted on top of utilities. And aggressive species were planted between the sidewalk and curb. And they lifted the sidewalks, and they got into sewer systems, sewer lateral systems. So people have had bad experiences with trees. And, you know, we're trying very hard to plant appropriate trees, the right tree for the right place. The line clearance standards are much stricter now since 9/11. And we just can't plant big trees under wires anymore. So we are going to have taller trees on one side of the street and more compact trees on the other side. Trees that only grow to be about 25 feet high. So there's a lot involved in, you know. We want people to be involved in the town. We want people to be proud of their town. And apparently, we have some people that aren't very proud of our tree program right now. And I think by creating some kind of an advisory group might give them the voice to just promote some change.
Can I make a recommendation? Because I think this is a great learning opportunity that maybe we could maybe get the students from the environmental club that were on the call this evening and invite others on an education seminar that maybe, you know, we could have a Zoom meeting on. Or you could, you know, maybe the environmental committee, our environmental committee can partner with the school and have Mr. Linson as a guest speaker to educate, you know, for the students to let them know about the diseased trees and how all this works. So just a, just a recommendation.
Council President, thank you for that. Oh, sorry, Kim, but thank you for that. Because the environmental commission already works with high school, you know, on so many projects that we do. And I work directly with Ryan DelGarcio, Dean and Director of Technology and Engineering. And in that team is also science instructor Pete Ficassell, who runs the Fight for Green team. So I do know that Ryan DelGarcio met with superintendent last Friday. Because we are in the process of creating a sustainable team for the Board of Education. And this could fit, this could all fit in there.
Okay, great. I don't want to be laboring, but.
Good point.
I do not want to neglect the voices of the advocates that are, that are not of the, of the the high school age, if you will. I do want to continue the discussion on the possibility of, you know, certainly sharing out the plan, the forestry management plan amongst ourselves and also with the general public. But also to that effort of creating at least an advisory commission to be able to share the responsibilities of sustainability and policy and, you know, other things that we may agree on. Thank you, Mr. Linson, for that, for your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want Mr. Kazer to chime in, because he's been working with us.
The only thing I want to mention is that we have existing ordinances regarding shade trees in Chapter 20 of the code. And they make reference to shade tree superintendent. And I suspect from the knowledge I have going back to my involvement with many years ago is that there used to be a lot of town and county shade tree commissions. And they were paid positions and groups and employees. And a lot of towns and counties gave up on them because of the money they were costing and the potential liability that they were exposed to. But we, you know, if you go back to our 1972 code, you know, we have, we have existing legislation regarding tree shrubs, poles and posts, and making reference to shade tree superintendent. And Lenny may know the history of that better than anybody here, I don't know. But I don't know when that went away. But there's a lot of things you can do, but they're not free.
I would hope with volunteers and their willingness to create something that we could do without having to pay anyone.
Okay, well, to get back to the, I'm glad we had this opportunity. We went a little off track only because we have Mr. Linson on the line. So it leaves us a lot to think about, to move forward with. And unless anyone has a quick question on this ordinance for now, and we'll look in the future. Madam Clerk, you could take a roll call vote.
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2624-20 and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic Subsection 7-19 through Streets and Subsection 7-21.2 Multway Stops Near Schools, Playgrounds and Youth Recreation Facilities of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange? Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move. Our second.
Okay. Councilman, I have to do a roll call. Councilman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Ordinances, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Linson. Thank you.
Ordinances on first reading, 2624-20 and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic Subsection 7-19 Through Streets and Subsection 7-21.2 Multway Stops Near Schools, Playgrounds and Youth Recreation Facilities of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange? Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move. Our second.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman, I have to do a roll call. Councilman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Lepore, if you'd like to go over this quickly?
Sure, pretty self-explanatory. The intersection of Forest Avenue and Ellen Street. I guess that's the southwest corner of the Redwood School. It's a T-intersection, it's adjacent to the Kitty and Tot Lot. We're going to, we're requesting that be established as a all-way stop.
Okay.
A number of years ago, the state legislature made it a lot easier to designate stop intersections and all-way stop intersections at schools.
So a question for you, so when you're coming down. Oh no, so it's not on Woodland Avenue, you would have to stop. Right, you wouldn't have to stop on Woodland Avenue when you're going around that bend, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Just trying to picture it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lepore. Does any of my colleagues have questions at this time? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2625-20 and ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee's status as a township employee. And under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I'm moved. I can.
Councilman Greeno?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
or we find the time, we find an error embedded somewhere in, in the document, we bring it before you for change tonight is, uh, it, it comes before you because of the recently approved police PBA contracts.
Okay. Alrighty. So with that, um, we're done with our ordinance on first reading. Does anybody, oh, pending matters. I have something for pending matters real quick. So next council meeting is December 15th. Be our last council meeting of the year. With that, um, it could be a long meeting, um, because the planning board's resolution will come to us at the next meeting. We also have a conference agenda. Councilman Guarino had asked, um, a couple, uh, last month, um, if he can make the Street Smart presentation, which, um, is beneficial to the community. I think it's 15 to 20 minutes long, plus with our two colleagues' departure. I like to take a few, few moments, uh, there. So I was going to recommend if, with my colleagues' approval, if we can move conference agenda up to 6:00 PM to get started a little bit earlier. If everyone's okay with that, so you need to come on the call, you know, by, uh, quarter to six, 10 to six.
Is there enough time for the clerk to make that correct, that change?
Yes. Yeah.
I'm okay.
Everybody would be good.
I'm okay with the change.
Um, I just have to say that on my calendar, um, unless, um, Mr. Sayers, Jack, are you still there?
I'm still here.
There is a municipal insurance fund commission that I have on my calendar that starts at 5:45. Is that on your calendar still?
I don't have my calendar in front of me. John Gross?
I, I was going to propose that the, that, that meeting be moved to January.
Okay. We can.
Fine by me.
I don't have an objection to that. So if it's moved, then I don't have a problem, Council President, um, to start at that time.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. Thank you for that. Um, so we could, uh, take our time there. And that was all I had. If anybody had anything else? Okay.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Oh, sorry, Councilman. I can't see you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to throw this out to the administration. I understand that, that, uh, the municipality is no longer, um, involved with access to the Ring doorbell system. I just wanted to find out more about that.
Oh.
Remember, we, I mean, it's probably not even a year old.
So.
Mr. Gross?
Do you, do you want to? Cause I, I can respond if you guys don't, gentlemen.
I just, I just want to know what's going on. I don't recall that we've ever been told this.
Well, well, at a meeting, a prior meeting, I think in August, the chief was available to speak. We had said we would assess the program after a year. And, you know, he, he was fine with not renewing it. So it, it didn't get renewed. So it's like we had a vote not to have it. It just didn't get renewed.
So he said at an August meeting that, that, uh, that he wasn't going to renew it?
Yes. No, um, I believe not. Man, man, Mr. Sayers, if you recall, not many, uh, there weren't, there wasn't even anybody that took him up on the, you know, on, on the offer or their situation that we, uh, that we had in play. Don't forget, some, you know, they, if, if someone wa, has the ring, they could, um, bring their video to the police station. So they still have that option. All we had that we approved is that the resident could send it directly to the, Amazon would send it directly to the police station, take out that stuff from the resident. So.
Okay. I just wondered when, when it happened.
Okay, August. It was, it was August.
Oh, so, so the contract was up in August and, and the, uh, chief.
Wasn't renewed.
Told the council.
Yeah, it wasn't renewed.
But I, I'm sorry. I just don't recall that. So I, I appreciate it.
Sure. Okay. Anything else, Councilman? Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
All right. No, not on that. I was just, um, gonna ask another question.
Are you done, Councilman?
Yes. I have plenty of other stuff to talk about, but, uh, probably not tonight.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just a question. I know December 15th is our last, um, meeting of the year. It's insane that it is. Really insane that it is. I can't believe how fast this time has gone by. I know, um, when I, uh, before I was sworn in, I sat with the council, um, as, as was tradition. Are, are council members elect, councilman, councilwoman-elect, Williams and, uh, councilman-elect, Rutherford going to be on the next, um?
So Madam Clerk and I had a discussion about that today because like I said, the, the results came in over the weekend and we had this set up. So, um, because, yes, the, the, the shorter answer is they can't really sit with us like we did when we were on the dais, but, um, they'll get a packet beforehand. And, um, so they can review it. They, um, they're not allowed to, um, they're not able to, um, comment on anything. So they could follow along. So Madam Clerk will be in touch with them. And this way they could follow, follow along, whether there'll be a panelist. I don't think so because they, you know, there's, they don't have to comment and too many panelists. The screen gets smaller. So, uh, but they'll have an opportunity to, we'll figure out how to ask questions and how to deal with it being a Zoom meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, but we're, yeah, she's definitely going to reach out to them, uh, tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I wasn't sure whether we were going to talk about next steps for the, uh, tree situation, not just the tree ordinance, but the tree situation. And I, I wasn't sure if you were planning on talking about this at, at Matters Penney, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, that it was discussed in terms of what are our next steps going to be?
I, I, I would recommend that, um, we talked about a lot of information tonight. I like to see the administration, um, get this going and, and publicized and then revisit it in January.
Well, obviously I wouldn't be around, at least in my official capacity in January. But do the, do the rest of the council people, uh, want to move forward faster? Or you want to wait till January? Cause I, I'd prefer to move faster.
Councilman, can you clarify what you mean by tree situation? I mean, there's been a lot of tree situations.
Yes. That's why I was saying that I didn't want to restrict it to just the tree ordinance because we've been talking for several months about potential additional changes to the ordinance. But we haven't actually moved in that direction. So I was hoping that that's what we wanted to do. Because I, I have to tell you, as much as I enjoy hearing all the people talk about trees at the, at public comment, and it's really important and they've been a real boost here. I just would prefer if we didn't spend, you know, two hours on public comment every, every council meeting. That's all. And if, maybe if we deal with some of these things, even at a separate meeting at a work, at a, a work meeting, we can, we can avoid that. But there's also been other issues raised. There's issues of the policies and procedures. And other items that aren't directly related to the ordinance that I just thought we should get organized and start moving on. So, but it's really, I, I can't force anybody to, to crank this up in December or the rest of November. So that's why I was just throwing it out to see if the other council colleagues wanted to move sooner than January.
I, I'll speak for myself. I, I do not counsel man, only because I, I've been breathing and, and had this ord, the, these changes for the past two months. And, um, again, I want to, you know, I, I want the administration to implement these changes the best way possible. So they, um, they're enforced. So to give them anything else right now, I, 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 I would like to wait till after the new year. Not, not to mean, you know, you can't come back in a different capacity to join in the conversation, but I just don't see rushing anything in December, busy month, you know, um, so I, I, I'm not in favor of rushing into anything else right now. I'll let my other colleague speak.
Council, Councilman Krokoviac, I, I would like to have the opportunity to review, um, the forestry management plan, the five year plan, um, and then, um, come together with some thoughts, ideas, suggestions after we've, um, been able to digest that. Considering next council meeting is going to be very, um, jam packed. I, I think I would like the opportunity also to continue to review and prepare in advance for that meeting. And I don't want to rush, uh, the process of, of digesting the, the plan and seeing what, um, others are doing in regards to advisory board. So I'm not in a rush right now because I, I want to be able to have a better understanding of what our plan entails. Also looking at the ordinance that, uh, Mr. Kizer referenced, um, see what we have and, move forward from there. But I, I'm, I don't have an appetite to do it, um, in a rush.
Council President, to that point, I introduced this tree ordinance back in August and here it is the end of November. So I think considering we have this much more information that we do have to digest, this has to all get posted to the website. We have to do an education campaign. I do want to learn more about the tree fund. I do have a copy of the community forestry management plan because that's part of our sustainable jersey package. It's a lot of information and I, it's going to be a long discussion. And I can't, I can't imagine it's going to happen between now and December 15th. I mean, unless we have a special meeting and I, it's just too busy at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send all of you, uh, to, to the council as a body, um, an email probably tomorrow or sometime in the next couple of days regarding the process to do this kind of stuff. Just because I've thought about it a little bit today and I checked some other ordinances that we have. And so I'm going to follow up in that fashion. It's late now and I don't think anybody wants to talk about anything. So.
And we always talk about having work sessions. I think that's important for us to have because we do things, you know, either through conversations or text messages and we don't get a feel of moving forward if we don't all talk together.
Yeah.
Councilwoman McCartney, let's just be very clear for the public. We don't all get on text messages together to do any work.
Oh, no, no.
There, right. Because exactly for that reason, yes.
Okay. So with that, I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, Council President.
Do I have a second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Good night, West Orange. I just want to, uh, the next meeting is December 15th, as we did state. And we, uh, behalf of all of us, we'd like to wish you all a happy, safe and healthy Thanksgiving. Good night, West Orange.
Good night.
Thanksgiving.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on and off screen and no other business will be conducted. Thank you. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving and have a great night.
Stay safe. Enjoy your families, everybody.